Live in five, four, three.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 28th, 2014, meeting of the NIC Board of Trustees. As we open every meeting, I would ask that you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full quorum. All of the trustees are present. We do have a guest who has signed up for public comment, Tom Stasser, and in a moment, I'll introduce him and allow him to make his comments. Before we do that, though, I'm going to ask the trustees if they've had an opportunity to review the minutes and if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes that would be suggested. Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented.
Mr. Chair, do we have two sets of minutes? Do we have a workshop and a board meeting? So we're approving both?
Yes.
Thank you.
They're still both accepted, I take it?
Yes.
Now, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and Tom, would you like to make some comments? Good evening.
Again, thank you. I'm here because last night I was very surprised to see that the Jacqueline Seed Site was not discussed during the CTE site discussions. And I found out it was inadvertently eliminated from the Dave Teeter study. And I want to just quickly review again what our proposal was. RGU, the prior consultants, came to us and asked if the Jacqueline Seed Site could be considered as a potential CTE campus. Our proposal to RGU was per RGU's guidelines. Thus, we presented a lease with an option to purchase. The cost estimates in the study prepared by RGU for all the potential sites concluded that the Jacqueline Seed Site was the lowest cost option presented. The lease option that we proposed provided a pathway to fund the CTE campus without utilizing a bond, and the Jacqueline Seed Site provided the most flexible expansion options because they could grow into all the buildings. Not only was it the lowest-cost, most flexible option, and the only one that didn't require a bond, NIC would end up owning 14 acres of prime freeway and waterfront property at the gateway of Idaho. We reiterated many times that we were only responding to the requests of NIC, and if they wanted to discuss any particular issues, we were open to those discussions. And if there are any issues with our proposal that would not make it a viable site on why it was not considered, I'd like to know what those are and be able to respond to them. So I'm here to just implore the board, on behalf of the taxpayers, the students, and Cootney County, to correct the oversight and direct Dave Teeter to vet our proposal. That's the reason I'm here. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or be able to respond to you afterwards or later if questions come up.
Tom, thank you very much for your comments. Yeah, are there questions? Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I was going to say, Tom, I was not aware that you were not put into this packet or were asked to. My understanding was that the proposal that you made before was a reconditioning of your existing facility and a gateway to get to where we need to be, and that this discussion that was hired by Teeter and his consulting team was for new greenfield startups. So if I, it would be a recommendation of the board if we have, an oversight was done, that I think that we should be included.
Any other comment, Tom?
Actually, Ron hit it because we had the second proposal, which was for the interim facility for welding and a couple of other things, but I think we maybe inadvertently took the original proposal off the table, which was...
I think that's what happened is, I think Mr. Teeter maybe heard about the second proposal, which was a temporary, smaller one, and thought that the whole site was off. So, like I said, I think it was inadvertent, and that's why I'm here again.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Our next agenda item is celebrating success, one of the really interesting times of our meetings where we get to hear different dimensions of what's going on on campus. And tonight, Max Mendez is going to present the celebrating success, Stories of the Gathering Place.
Good evening. Thank you very much, trustees, President Dunlap, constituents, vice presidents. Thank you for having me here today. I'm really excited to share with you, hopefully briefly, a little bit about our symposium program that we presented this year called Stories of the Gathering Place. It was brought to you by, through Cardinal Connections. And I'll give you a little bit of background. Cardinal Connections is a symposium program that's been around for about the last six years. Its mission is simple, is just to connect community and campus. It's really building a culture of community here. As you may have, if you were at commencement, you know that's been my, my big agenda this year, is building community. And really, what it does is, this year, what we focused on was fostering links between the past, present, and future of North Idaho College. We felt that that was really important. And that took place under the, under the theme of Stories of the Gathering Place, which was our focus. The Gathering Place, which is the translation of the, of the location of the Coeur d'Alene tribal language, translates to the Gathering Place. We felt it was a significance for the, for the Coeur d'Alene tribe, but it also celebrated the culture of the Fort Ground area, as well as the culture of North Idaho College, and we felt that was really important. It was a year-long focus, and during that focus, we did, we did three things. We had a speaker series in the fall that featured Quanam Atheson from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe to talk about the history of Coeur d'Alene, the tribe in this area. Mark Wedick, who is a great speaker, talks about fur trading of the area, some of the very first commerce that took place in this Fort Ground area. Quanam Atheson was, was, was a collaboration with the American Indian Studies Institute and Evan Lee Melting Tallow, while Mark Wedick's participation was also a collaboration with the American Indian Studies Program. So Cardinal Connections is, is interested in this idea of collaborative learning. And then with the music department, we brought in a speaker and performer by the name of Julia Keefe. And Julia is an advocate, a Spokane resident, a member of the Ness Purse Tribe, and an advocate for the, for the recognition of a great jazz singer by the name of Mildred Bailey. Mildred Bailey also happened to be a member of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. She is known for some of her early successes in the world of jazz, but even more so, she is the person who got Bing Crosby his start in Los Angeles before he became the Bing Crosby that we know. And so, and, and her contributions to music, we felt was, was significant enough to have her come onto campus and present a series of, of presentations on Mildred Bailey, as well as a performance on campus. We also took one of the NIC ensembles and Julia down to Plummer, Idaho, and we performed for the elementary school at Lakeside, elementary school in Plummer. So that was, that was part of our, our reaching out to the community. What I'm really here to talk to you a little bit more about is our storytelling project. And our storytelling project came out of, of some of the projects that you hear on things like National Public Radio, the StoryCorps Project. If you've ever listened to those, you hear how poignant those stories can be, a snapshot of somebody's life experience that's, that's of significance. And we thought, well, why can't we do that here with the Fort Ground, in the Gathering Place area? And so what we did is we put out an invitation to the community to come and retell a story that involves an experience within this area known as the Gathering Place. We weren't looking for a, a, an archival documentation, you know, a four-hour story of, of growing up, but we wanted a two-to-three-minute snapshot, something that gave us a glimpse of what life was like, what life is like, in this, in this gathering place. Again, two-to-three-minute stories formatted, facilitated by an interview in a video format. So we were fortunate to do that. Who we, who we were able to pull in to come and tell our stories are past and present, present residents of the Fort Ground, North Idaho College students, faculty and staff, workers from the mill site, as well as those from the tribal tradition to come and tell stories. We still have backlog of people. We have not had, had, had a chance to come in and tell their stories. It was, it proved to be quite popular, and so we're really excited about that. What I have to show to you is, is a short montage, if you will, of, of three of the stories that we've, that we're continuing to edit and finish up. You'll, as Andy is putting together the, to show the video, you're going to hear from three of our storytellers. Shelley Stoddard-Ruff, whose parents built one of the first houses on the, in the Fort Ground area. Our own John Totten from Outdoor Pursuits to talk about, about that NIC program and the tradition of the beachfront. And then Bonnie McDowell, who was one of the very first graduates from NIC campus on, in, in, in the Fort Ground. She was part of the book brigade that took all of the, all of the books from the City Hall to North Idaho College, to, to, to the first buildings there. So Andy, if you can please show that. Hello, my name is Max Mendez, and this is Stories of the Gathering Place, brought to you by North Idaho College's Cardinal Connections. Today, we have with us Shelley Stoddard-Ruff, who grew up in the Fort Ground from 1951 to 1971. Hello, Shelley, how are you?
Hi, Max, nice to meet you.
Well, it sounds like you have some really great stories, and, and one of those stories is, has to do with your legacy, your parents.
Right, right.
Would you like to share that with us today?
Sure, I'd love to. My dad and his family, Lee was his dad and Sylvia his mother, they lived in eight different houses in the Fort Grounds. And about 1940, they were living at 635 West Garden, and my dad was home after college in his first year of teaching in Southern Idaho. And his room was at the top in the dormer part of the house at 635. And in the mornings, he would get up and he would just notice this real cute little gal walking down the other side of the sidewalk toward the city park. So he watched her for, you know, several, several days, and he finally asked his friend, Don La Boy, that lived at the end of the block, if he knew who that girl was, because Don had lived here the whole time. And he said, yes, that's Margie Carter. She, her parents, my grandparents had a donut shop up where the old, about where the old Templin's building is, and she worked there. So she would walk every morning up to work at the, at the donut shop. So my dad watched her for a while, and then eventually he got up his courage, and on the way home one night, he stopped her and talked to her a little bit, and they met, and they were pretty much dated right up until October, when they decided that they were the perfect pair, and they decided to elope, just to spare my grandparents, my mom's parents, the cost of the wedding. So off they went. They went down to Orfino, Idaho, and went to the courthouse to get their marriage license, and came out and went to Moscow, where their dear friends Anna and Mac Neely lived, and Anna and Mac stood up for them at the wedding at the Presbyterian Church in Moscow. And so they were married secretly, thinking they could keep this a big secret. They weren't going to tell anybody for several months that they were married, because dad was going to go back down to South Idaho and teach, and mom was going to stay here and keep working. Well, by the time they got home, everybody in Coeur d'Alene knew that they'd gotten married, because when they were walking out of the courthouse in Orfino, there was a gentleman at, at a bar across the street from the courthouse, and he had seen the University of Idaho's quarterback and pitcher coming out of the courthouse with a girl on his arm. So they, everybody put two and two together, and this gentleman had come back up to Coeur d'Alene to another bar, and had spread the word. So by the time mom and dad got home, their families knew, everybody in Coeur d'Alene knew that they'd gotten married.
Connections, today we're going to hear a story about a program at NIC called Outdoor Pursuits. Joining us is John Totten.
Yeah, the Outdoor Pursuits Program has been operating in some capacity for over 40 years here at North Idaho College. And it was started by a fellow named Dean Bennett, and with a, a couple of backpacks, and off they went. It was where it, where it began. And early in its, in its history, the program, they decided that it would be best utilized here on the waterfront at NIC. As we all know, it's an incredibly unique background. I mean, I've never been on another campus that had that kind of waterfront access there for, for programs and the community to use. And so the program's been down on the lakefront for, for most of that time, and it began with just a couple of sailboats and canoes down there, where that was where it began, and students could come and try sailing. It was literally that simple. You could go down and grab a boat and give it a go, real open. And we still have a lot of that spirit within our program. We are definitely of the open and try-it camp, as opposed to the rigid instruction style. We like to provide as many opportunities that way as we can. And so with those couple of boats, came a couple more boats, and eventually some detail, some actual instruction was going on down there, so folks could come down and take a sailing lesson, or take a paddling lesson from, Dean was really good at bringing in local community members to teach those courses, because at that time, there wasn't, you know, real official outdoor education, adventure education that we think of now.
Well, thank you. My first classes were at the Old City Hall, and then we had PE class at the Little Round Table, it was called, that was underneath the Hart Drugstore on Fourth and Sherman. And that fall, or that winter, December to January, was when we moved everything from the third story of the City Hall down to the campus here with the Administration Building.
So students helped in the move?
Oh, yes, all the students helped carry all those books from, from there and the supplies and things down. And I was in the first class that graduated from Perry Christian Gymnasium, which it was not called that at that time. Dr. Kildale was the president of the college. And at the, when I started in the fall, I had one class on campus, and that was zoology. And we had it in the Little White Building, that was the only one. And they were building the, the Administration Building and that at that time.
So that would be Lee Hall was being built, and I remember the small building is now called McLean, and I can remember when the hoods were in there for the, the science classes, for the chemistry and the physics and...
Right.
And you had zoology there?
I did. My worst subject, I was always on the honor roll, and, but that was my hardest one.
This is Steve Rupel for Cardinal Connections. I want to thank our guest today, Bonnie McDowell, for sharing her stories of the Fort Grounds, the Stories of the Gathering Place. So that's just a small sample we have. We have several others that we need to continue to edit. So there was, some of the things that we had to consider is training our interviewers, and so we had a really great team. The Office of Instruction, under the direction of Dr. Lita Burns, has, 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 has been our, the office that we run Cardinal Connections under, and has been very, very supportive in our projects here to, to connect community and campus. But I also have a really great team. Andy Finney, who, who, who's given lots of hours to us in the studio, creating the studio, helping us do the training with our interviewers. You saw myself as an interviewer. Kim Golden, who's a community member, who also had, had, had a role in developing the waterfront site when he worked for the U.S. Department of Forestry. And then also Steve Rupel. So we had, we did training sessions to train our, our interviewers to be on camera. Jeff Carr from our, from our Journalism Department, John Jensen from Communications and Philosophy, Tom Green from our College Relations, and then Lee Wallace, who is also a part-time communications instructor, was, was instrumental in helping us put these programs together. We had a great deal of support from Communications and Marketing, and Sarah Fladlin from Development and North Idaho College Foundation. We applied and received a grant from the Idaho Humanities Council for the Stories of the Gathering Place project to help support that, fund the building of the set and, and other resources for that. Our hope is that, that this project in particular can continue to, to, to move forward, and we can look at expanding programming, not only to highlight those in the Gathering Place, but also to highlight some of the programs that we have here on North Idaho College that we can take to a broader audience and communicate that to our community. So, thank you for your time.
Max, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments, Judy?
Just a, just a one, great idea, because I know part of the Popcorn Forum transition was to this program, as I understand it. Are these film segments then available on Channel 19 besides what was just shown here?
That, that is going to be the goal, is to, is to propose them to Channel 19 so that they can use those for filler. The challenge we had is, ultimately, we wanted to go to two-to-three minutes, and what we're finding is these stories are incredibly interesting, and in some cases, could fit into a half-hour format and, and really be something that even from Idaho public television might be interested in, in using in that format. So, so we're, we're still editing, where I think we could still get some two-to-three-minute formats, pieces together with all of these, but then we have this extra footage. Additionally, we're excited about the ability to have these in archives through our, through our library, because in another 70 years, we're going to want to have somebody come and write another book about, about the continuing history. And we have, and to be able to capture some of these early students on video and to get their stories are going to be really important for us as we continue our story here.
Good for you.
First of all, Max is, you're an incredible speaker. I enjoy watching you speak with a smile and all the energy that you have, and, and for somebody that's only been in this community for 12, 13 years, to be able to get a little bit of the history and get a chance to see that, that's awesome. And I want to say that you're one of the few speakers I've ever seen get a standing ovation. You had us all stand up and sing, so, but we call that a standing ovation. That was great at graduation.
Sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do.
That's right. Good job.
Thank you.
That note.
Max, again, thank you very much. And by the way, the, the jazz concert that you had with Julia Keefe here, I have heard nothing but good things, and a lot of people were just really amazed at the quality of the performances and everything, and you're going to be congratulated on putting that together.
Well, I appreciate that. My, my students and, and the performers work awfully hard, so I have to, I have to give it a lot to them, because they're, because of their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Our next agenda item is, are the constituent reports, and we first have Asnik with Richard Fortman. And Richard, go on forward, and let us congratulate you on your election to the...
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm happy to be here, and I'm glad to represent the voice of the students. So, good evening, Chairman Howard, Dr. Dunlap, and other members of the board. Let me introduce myself, you kind of already did, but my name is Rich Fortman, I'm the new Asnik president. Kara Burnham is the vice president, she was unable to be here. Some of our other members, the senators, are Ben, Jeremy, Greta, and Casey. Jeremy is here, and Casey is here. As a board, we are committed to continuing the hard work that the last year's board did, by furthering the progress on the Recreation Center, the Diversity Center, and extended student study hours, and transparency of tuition fees. In addition to that, we will keep the bar raised, because they, they really did raise the bar up high, and I got some big physical shoes to fill, and also, yeah, anyways. So, we would like to push ourselves to further the success of the student government by working, working with you guys and working with the students to be their voice, and to always recognize that we are the voice, and to bring that to you guys the best that we can. Over the summer, we will be working on the Student Events Board, getting stuff ready for the next semester, and also working on our objectives that I just outlined. So, this is the end of my report, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask, and I'll answer them the best that I can.
Are there any questions? You go by Rich?
Rich, Richard, yeah, it's just anything but late for dinner, so...
Good. Well, let us know how you'd like to be addressed, because we're going to see a little bit of you over the next year, right?
Yeah, I hope so.
Good. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is the report from the Staff Assembly, Carol Jones.
Good evening, trustees and President Dunlap. I'm very pleased to represent Staff Assembly for the upcoming year, and I will be also joined by Jessica Grantham, our vice chair, and Kristy Grenear will be the Staff Assembly Secretary. Our new senators are Josh Gittle, Betsy Connery, Kelly Hopkins, Kim Browning, and alternates Teresa Henderson and Kelly Lyons. And then they will be joining our continuing senators, Chantel Black, Lynn Covey, Neshay Noble, and Heidi Schrader. And this month, for Staff Assembly's meeting, we were very pleased to have President Dunlap as a featured speaker, and he gave us an overview of the budget process that's before the trustees, and overview of the salary recommendations, and some of the challenges with funding. We also heard from Alex Harris on the new weapons policy, and we recognized all of our staff appreciation award nominees. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions or any comments? Carol, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you for the rest of the year also. Our next report under constituent reports is Faculty Assembly, Erin Davis. Erin?
Chairman Howard, trustees, and President Dunlap, good evening. Allow me to introduce myself to you. I'm an English instructor. I promise not to correct anybody's grammar, though. I've been with NIC for six years. Two years ago, the board granted me tenure. In April, I was elected Faculty Assembly Chair for the upcoming school year, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve and represent my colleagues. We actually have all new officers on Faculty Assembly this year. Communications Instructor Josh Meisner was elected vice chair, and Communications Instructor Tracy Struble was elected as our secretary and treasurer. As you know, May 16th was a pretty great day here at NIC. We always luck out with Mother Nature on graduation day. For our graduating students, the commencement ceremony is the culmination of their hard work, hopes, and dreams for the future. For faculty, the commencement ceremony is both an opportunity to celebrate our students' success and a reminder of how lucky we are to be an integral part of the mission of this community college. And each year, I kind of get a tug on the heartstrings when I hear pomp and circumstance, and see our students walking through and processing in, but I have to confess that my heartstrings were tugging a little harder this year, because I was not only a proud faculty member, but a proud mom. My son, Jack, graduated with his Associate of Arts degree here from NIC, and I'm so impressed with the quality of education that he experienced here. NIC has really given him the foundation he needs to transfer and pursue his bachelor's degree, so I want to thank all of my colleagues who were part of that and did such a fine job of teaching him. But enough of the proud mom stuff. Our last Faculty Assembly meeting of the school year was held on May 8th, just as we were all gearing up to grade final papers, exams, and projects. At this meeting, we elected new senators. Congratulations to Senators Joe Jacoby, Christina Clausen, and Carla Mitchell, and alternate senators Jonathan Frye and John Clausen. We also had Alex Harris come to speak to us about the changes to NIC's weapons policy in light of the new law allowing those with an enhanced license to carry concealed weapons to have those weapons on campus. A safe and secure learning environment is the primary concern of faculty, so we really appreciate Alex coming and explaining the proposed policy changes to us, and taking time to answer all of our questions, and offering clarification to us regarding the implications of the new law. Finally, at our May meeting, we decided how to spend the remaining funds in the Faculty Assembly Treasury. First of all, we decided to purchase a new camera to use at our meetings, so that our faculty from our outreach centers and those participating in our meetings through Blackboard Collaborate can see what is going on. Our existing equipment really needed to be updated, and I look forward to getting trained on how to use this great technology before our next meeting in September. Second, we decided to purchase 45 copy... Second, we decided to purchase 45 copies of the book Nickel and Dime, which NIC will be using for its first Common Read next year. We think the Common Read is a great idea and we're happy to support and encourage faculty participation by purchasing these books. And the last thing we decided to spend our money on, which was a leadership retreat, which was more like a leadership luncheon for the new and current members of the faculty assembly executive committee because we have all new officers this year. The assembly voted to provide us with this orientation so that we could learn all about our new duties and responsibilities. So, I'd like to thank my predecessors, Michelle Lippert and Kathy O'Brien, as well as outgoing vice chair Christina Edmondson and outgoing secretary treasurer Laura Templeman for their support and help in showing me, Josh and Tracy the ropes. We have a really great team and I look forward to working with them in the upcoming school year after everybody gets a little refreshed over the summer. So, that's my report. Any questions?
Erin, any questions or comments for Erin? Thank you. Our next constituent report is the senate, Chantel Black.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees and President Dunlap and all of our guests. I'm here to give our senate report, but first I'd like to introduce myself. As you mentioned, I'm Chantel Black, I'm the assistant registrar at NIC. I've worked here for nine years and I'm happy to be the chair for the next year. At our last senate meeting on May 15th, we did elect all of our officers, including me, are also joining John Trombold as our vice chair, Josh Gittle as our parliamentarian and then our corresponding secretary will be Karen Rupel for the next academic year. At our meeting, we did pass for second reading the tenure policy. We also passed two standing committees in a second reading, that's the Student Union Advisory Board Committee as well as the Sustainability Committee. And then we also passed the Dangerous Weapons on College Property policy and procedure for both a first and a second reading. And then we reviewed the NIC calendars as an information item. So, this concludes my senate report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Chantel? Again, thank you, welcome. Our next agenda item, President's Report, Dr. Dunlap. You notice I called you Dr. Dunlap tonight, I mean, it was being very formal. I know that you were just elected to this job. Been at it for a while.
I appreciate that, Chairman Howard Esquire. Chairman Howard, trustees and colleagues, good evening. First of all, I want to thank the trustees for participating in graduation and the breakfast we had in the morning, that was a great event and it was wonderful to see all those students receiving their certificates and diploma and what a great day on campus. So, thank you all for your participation in that. I also want to congratulate our new constituent group and thank them for their anticipated service, giving up their time and moving into a leadership position, particularly one that reports to the board can sometimes be a daunting task, but thank you for stepping up to the plate. Now, Erin and Chantel mentioned a few things about themselves and I'm going to mention a couple of things about Richard and Carol so that you get a little bit to know them as well. Carol has been with the college for 13 years and she's the administrative assistant for the vice president for business and finance. And so, Carol, thank you for being here. And Richard is majoring in engineering. He works for the city's road department and he also was a senator last year, so Richard, welcome as well. And as a side note, Erin was an instructor or faculty member at Whitworth University prior to coming to NIC, so we're glad you moved over to here. I'm going to ask Grayden Stanley to report out on becoming a blue, or excuse me, a yellow ribboned school that supports veterans. So, Grayden, can you go ahead and mention that?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, trustees, President Dunlap and other guests. It's my pleasure to announce to you that North Idaho College has most recently been accepted as a yellow ribboned school, officially known as the Yellow Ribbon GI Bill Education Enhancement Program. We submitted an application about two weeks ago and just received notification that will be listed on the VA's GI Bill website as an institution that serves veterans by participating in this program. What it allows us to do is North Idaho College to make a contribution and it be matched by Veterans Affairs to help decrease the cost of veterans coming to school here, with particular emphasis on those veterans who may be attending school here, who would be subject to out-of-state tuition because this wasn't their original place of residence. They've moved here after they've come out of the service and they're attending school here would incur some additional costs and through a matching program with Veterans Affairs, North Idaho College joins nearly every other school in the state as a yellow ribboned college supporting veterans seeking their higher education. So, we're proud to be a part of that and you'll see more of a public announcement coming about it soon.
Any questions for Grayden Stanley? Next, I'm going to call on Mark Browning. He and his crew spent the day with Dave and Doug's crew to talk about promoting a bond campaign and messaging and so I'd like to ask Mark to report out on that.
Thank you, President Dunlap, Chairman Howard, members of the board. We had the pleasure to spend eight delightful hours today with a couple of members of Team Teeter. Tonya Boyer and Lori Simpson, who are in the back row and I would ask them to stand and be embarrassed, except I told them that that would not happen this evening, but you'll all notice and wave to them. They came and were very gracious in lending their expertise and thought and helping us to discover some of the challenges that will lie ahead when you make your decision on June 23rd, depending on whatever that decision might be, but the decision you will make on the 23rd. Did I mention you'll make a decision on the 23rd?
You're not the only one that's mentioned that.
Doing all I can to help you out, Mr. Chair. In all seriousness, there are things that need to be moving and processes that need to be vetted and we need to do our due diligence really prior to that decision that you will make regardless of what the outcome will be because time is really a precious commodity at this point. The team also helped us identify strengths in the local community, potential areas where we'll need to do some work and how we navigate that line to stay within our required area of operation, meaning that informational only and strictly informational only from the public sector versus an advocacy role and how we operate within those boundaries so that we do not put any of this process at jeopardy. So, their help is very, very appreciated today. We have a rough timeline that will take us through the fall already, that we know depending on the nature of the decision that you make on the 23rd, what needs to be done by certain dates and in fact, our work is already underway as of this afternoon, working towards that direction with some flexibility, obviously awaiting your outcome. So, Mr. President, that's what we spent our day doing.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark Browning?
I do have a question. Mark, assuming that we need to move forward with addressing the bond issue with the public, have you talked about some kind of a training session for all of us? Because as I understand it, there is, there are pretty obvious distinctions to some people who know, but for us that don't know, there are a lot of subtleties there that we could wander into without understanding that we're getting into trouble. So, we need to be trained if we go to that direction.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. The five of you will be intimately involved in the process because your role as a trustee can very much be one of advocacy where those of us who work directly for the college and are compensated with public funds cannot be in that role. So, you as volunteers for this job, for which you are paid handsomely for your time and efforts here, do get the privilege of being in an advocacy role. So, yes, early on, in all likelihood, the morning of the 24th, after you make your decision, we'll be in contact with you.
Mark, just for clarification, we've got everything ready to go except for we don't know the location, we don't know the size, we don't know what it's going to cost us and we don't know the source of the funds, but short of that, we're ready to make a decision.
Totally.
Roger that.
Totally ready.
Yep.
Mr. Chair and trustees, this is the time of year where, as you know, we are heavily involved in the budget and going after budget approval, but one of the things that you may not be aware of is the level of grant activity that is taking place to try and bring in additional funding to the college. And so, I want to go through some of those to give you a scope of the amount of work that's being done in that arena. At the last board meeting, we talked about including a SRO as part of our security plan and as part of our budget and we have done that, included it in the budget, but thanks to trustee Wood, she identified a COPS grant, C-O-P-S grant, that would allow us to partner with the city for those kind of resources. And after I get through going over some of these grants, you'll see why we have not had enough time to process that. However, our grants office and Alex Harris will be looking at that and trying to put that into the 2015 funding cycle, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. We currently have a Center of Excellence for Aerospace. We currently have a Center of Excellence for Forestry Products and the next round of the Trade Adjustment Act Community College Career Training Grant is, has been, the RFP has been released and that's the fourth round and we will be submitting a grant proposal to the U.S. Department of Labor for that. And this grant will be the largest grant that has ever been requested by North Idaho College. It'll be for $10 million. And Sarah Flaln from the grant office and our dean for health professions and nursing, Kristi Doyle, have been working feverishly on this. Now, if funded, this project aims to initiate a healthcare center of excellence, offering certificates, certifications and degrees that prepare students for employment in the healthcare industry. Some of those career pathways that it would support include surgical technology, medical lab technology, pharmacy technology, paramedic, dental assisting and dental hygiene, as well as medical assistant. And so, we are hopeful that our efforts will not go in vain and we have been quite successful with Sarah Flaln and the grants office previously and so we're very optimistic. In addition, we submitted a proposal to the Inland Northwest Community Foundation and Equinox Foundation to the, in the amount of $10,208 and if funded, this allows NIC to purchase the necessary computer equipment and testing room equipment needed for NIC Bonner's Ferry Center to become a Pearson GED testing site and alleviate the need for students residing in those northern areas, including Boundary and Bonner County, to travel to the main campus here in Cootney County to take their GED testing. And this past year, we had 750 students go through GED testing at NIC, in part because of some rural changes, but this grant would allow tremendous service to those students who reside further north. We have also submitted a grant proposal to the U.S. Department of Transportation in the amount of $124,000, almost $125,000 and if funded, this grant will provide tuition assistance and enhanced safety training for 30 students to obtain their commercial driver's license through the NIC Workforce Training Center Truck Driving Training Program. And a special focus of this grant is placed on recruiting veterans and long-term unemployed and preparing them to fill the vacancies for regional driving jobs in the forestry products industry and long-haul driving. We've submitted two grants to the American Indian Foundation and that would support tool scholarships for American Indian students enrolled in healthcare professions as well as the building trades. We've submitted a $5,000 grant proposal to the U.S. Bank Foundation in support of scholarships for students enrolled in the Integrated Business Entrepreneurship Program. And then lastly, I want to mention that you have an opportunity until the 31st of May to purchase your ticket for the Really Big Raffle fundraiser and thus far, the foundation has sold about 3,400 of the 5,000 tickets. The drawing is on July 9th. The house is valued at $260,000 and it's absolutely beautiful. It's on a fabulous lot that is bordered by a beautiful park and on the other side, it butts cul-de-sac and so there would be no additional neighbors moving in. So, I would encourage constituents as well as those who may be viewing to get in contact with our foundation and purchase one of those tickets. And in addition, there are over $300,000 in prizes that are given away that includes a boat and a car and other things. So, that funding and the point of this is that it supports a tremendous amount of student scholarships and in addition to that, it supports $55,000 towards our mini-grants that faculty and staff can apply for. And through those grants, faculty and staff have done some fabulous work on this campus. The latest has been the installation of the Sculpture Garden by Mike Horswell and that's over by the Community Garden and it adds an element to that area. And then lastly, I want to mention that the Albertsons Foundation approved the PTEC budget for next year and in that, it includes a major portion of funding for Cassie Silva's as well as faculty who will be teaching in those programs. And Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions?
Actually, I have a couple. Grayden, you were talking about becoming a yellow ribboned college along with many of the others here in the state. Now, Curly Lawson would have probably been spearheading that. Where are we getting a replacement for him and who's going to take that ball down the field?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, trustee Banducci. We're in the middle of that process, in fact, conducting interviews this week and next. We had a great field of candidates. We did have a number of candidates who were referred to us by Curly Lawson, so we feel really good about that field, have a great team that's involved. We should be seeing within the next two to three weeks a replacement recommended. We had the good fortune of having a former employee of North Idaho College, Denise Deveraux Moore, who worked here for a number of years, who is back here for the summer, has a strong background with veterans and advising, who is serving temporarily in that position and has done an outstanding job filling in for Curly, will have a permanent position and probably starts July 1st.
Follow-up question if I may on that one. Now, when I spoke with Curly, I think I caught him on his last day, actually, and I talked to him a couple of times prior and the week previous, he was thinking that he'll still be able to have a contact maybe at least once a week, once every couple of weeks. Are we still looking at that starting in the fall?
No, he certainly is. Trustee Banducci, that was by his choice and we certainly desire it as well. He's asked as a part of his load with Veterans Affairs to have NIC on his calendar and so his first couple of weeks that he had left NIC, he visited here probably more than they would have even preferred. We called on him often as well, but it's a regular part of his route and he'll continue to have that relationship with North Idaho College and our veteran students here and we're grateful for that.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, one more thing for me. Joe, you mentioned a number of grants, one quite significant, the $10 million. Not to put you on the spot for 20 minutes here, but as you listed those grants, do you have a sense of which ones are more likely to succeed and were the bulk of those grants just that amount, kind of an all or nothing, or could some of them be partially funded, like say the $10 million? Could they come back and give us two? Or, I'm kind of curious on how that grant process works.
Mr. Chair, trustee Banducci, these grants are all or nothing. There's no partial funding in these. And so, our expectation is that they all have a very high probability of success. Now, the $10 million is part of a consortium. In other words, we have some other schools that are part of this. However, we would be the lead agency, we would be the fiscal agent and by having a consortium, it provides a greater... agent, and by having a consortium, it provides a greater and stronger proposal to the Department of Labor, and so, I'm very optimistic about that. There's none on the list that I provided that I would say have less than a 60% chance of funding.
Or, one more question?
Let me see if there's any other questions first. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Were any of those a continuation grant or a repeat grant from previously?
No, these are, and as I look very quickly, I believe these are all brand-new grants, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we get into old business, each meeting, I try to take a moment and just repeat our mission statement, because I think it's important for all of us to be reminded of the mission that we've undertaken here at North Idaho College, and our mission statement reads, "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." And with that as a lead-in, we'll go to the old business, and first is the second reading of the textbook adoption policy. Lita Burns?
Trustee Howard, members of the board, last month, I presented to you the changes to the textbook adoption policy, and the changes really were rather brief to this policy, and we are just now coming before you, asking for adoption of this policy. Answer a question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt policy 7.05.
Give me a second.
Myra, second.
Any discussion on the motion?
One question, if I may. When I looked at the, quite a bit of it was deleted, and it was shortened substantially. Was there any concern from the faculty in the slight change in the approval process? It looked like the faculty kind of stepped out a little bit of this, and it was kind of relegated more to the Division Chair in consultation with the bookstore manager. Was there any concern with that, with the ramifications of that?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Banducci, actually, no, there was not, and the change in this actually offered more support to the faculty, because of the faculty, it was their position that they would rather not have the bookstore person have a right to cancel out what they are interested in in terms of a book, so, working, the faculty initiates the adoption of the book, the Division Chair approves it, and then works with the bookstore just to make sure that it's, you know, reasonable, we can acquire the book and all that sort of thing.
Basically, we moved it up the chain of command a little bit, so we have a little more oomph behind the request.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't respond.
I mean, that's what I'm sensing.
Correct.
Great.
Confirmation of the description here, adoption of textbooks and required course materials, does that include electronic materials?
It would. Chairman Howard, Trustee Myra, yes, it would include electronic materials, and sometimes it might be a packet of materials that the faculty has prepared that we actually copy in our copy center and then put in the bookstore for distribution, so it could be other-related reading materials or supplies.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Lita? We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The policy is adopted. The next item on the agenda is the Weapons on Campus Policy, and Grayden Stanley and Alex Harris are going to present on that.
Mr. Chairman, trustees, President Dunlap, and other guests, I'm serving as the agent for Alex Harris, who has recently been on a speaking tour in regard to Weapons on Campus, so I need to negotiate his fee before we bring him to the microphone, and see what we might be able to come up with. In sincerity, I want to recognize Alex and a number of people who have assisted with the research in this bill, there's been a number of people statewide who have contributed. Mark Browning's office certainly has been in communication with the other campuses as well, and with the State Board of Education, and then Alex's staff, including Pat Murray, the Campus Security Supervisor, have been participating in bringing all this information and policy together. Certainly, Mark Lyons, a college attorney, has been instrumental in providing guidance to us as well, so I want to recognize all those folks, and with special thanks to Alex Harris for all the great work he's done in developing this policy and procedure and presenting it to you tonight, so with no further to do.
Thanks, Grayden. Chairman Howard, President Dunlap, members of the board, I think you have in front of you policy 7.0401, Weapons on College Property. The copy you have in front of it is the old draft, the old policy with the strikeouts and the new policy in there, and I would entertain any questions.
Ron?
I've got a couple.
Alex? Hang on, Ron, Ron first.
Oh, I thought you said Tom.
No, I'm sorry.
I guess my question is, is that when the statement is stated, typically, that lays the outline where the, where you go into the policy, it states, "Exception to this, weapons policy exists where authorized by the state law." Why wouldn't we state that in the statement so that there's a clear clarification that we're not in conflict there?
Trustee Nielsen, there was quite a discussion and back and forth between a lot of different people on here, with President Joe and our legal counsel, Mark and Megan, about where to put what.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, it depends on just your interpretation of the statement. I'm of the feeling that we can always do away with the statement and just have the policy written there and not worry about it. When you read it, though, "Effort to provide a safe and positive educational environment, North Idaho College prohibits the possession or use of weapons on college property or other..." So, in general, we're prohibiting it, and we're saying that, and we're putting that out front, that's the first sentence, so that's the intent of it, is we're saying, "No weapons." And when you actually get into the policy, it says, "There's the exceptions," and then we get to the procedure, and it lists out the exceptions.
Thank you. Two clarifications, I think I heard your grand introduction refer to the fact that we've talked with the State Board about this, or State Board of Education's input, as well as our sister community colleges, as well as then, all the institutions of higher learning.
Yeah, I've done quite a bit of work, including, we've been on four, three conference calls now with all the attorneys of every institution in the state, including the State Board of Education. Mark or Mark and Megan have been on those calls. I've met with every Director of Security for every campus in Idaho, we had a meeting in Boise about this, and then we've kind of had this email discussion going around, including with Colleges of Southern Idaho and College of Western Idaho, their, College of Western Idaho is a little bit different. It's kind of a poker game, though, when we talk about presenting policies, no one wants to, no one wants to put it out there exactly what it is. The State Board put theirs out there. But we feel, with all that input, that this one is strong, and also, in looking at other states that had similar laws, like Colorado and Utah, we took some pieces from that, so that's how we came about this. These will all be coming forth, and as these different institutions have these meetings.
And do you sense that we're pretty much in accord on a common theme of how we're doing this? Because I think it's going to be hard for the public and students if we have variations.
Yeah, you know, I think we are. There are some, LCSC is a little bit different, they've always allowed concealed weapons on campuses, so they kind of are the outlier in what they're doing, and haven't really said what they're going to do with their policy, if anything.
And yet, we partner with LCSC here.
But they defer to us as far as the campus here, up here.
Okay, so we are, they subsume to us.
Same as University of Idaho up here, and those were, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair and Trustee Myra, the clarification on that is that Lewis Clark State College is a tenant at the Harbor Center of the University of Idaho. University of Idaho actually holds lease on that building, so their policies would take place, but they both have said that they, given the fact that we are the majority dominant resident institution here in terms of a footprint, that they will defer to our campus, physical campus policy.
So, a student needs to follow which rules when they're going on multiple classes?
They would follow the NIC rules.
And help folks understand that, to set them up for success.
Absolutely, as soon as this passes, that's, passes, that's the next step for faculty, staff, and students, the PR work, the getting them to understand that.
And my only other question had to do with, Chairman Howard, you had helped us realize before, the question about display of weapons was kind of one of the questions you had discussed, and so, my notes in the margin were, "We don't really talk about display of weapons in this, do we?" And what does that mean anyway, if we talk about it? I think it was one of the confusion parts I had as a trustee.
Wouldn't that be part of the procedure, which, I was ready to talk to that, but I don't see the procedure anywhere, all I see is the policy.
I believe you've seen the copy of the procedure.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, would you, did you want to answer that question?
As far as display?
Uh huh.
It's obviously not in the policy, and it's one of those interpretations, it's one of those things that's still talked about on our last call with the legal councils from all the institutions, it's one of those things that Mark and I have discussed and looked for interpretations. The University of Idaho provided some information about display. Idaho code has very little when it comes to that. It talks about displaying in a threatening or arguing manner, and that's display, and that can be a misdemeanor, but in nowhere, nowhere in state code or anything does it talk about, and Mark, step in if I'm going too far here, does it talk about seeing this much of a weapon, or seeing this much of an outline, or...
The technique it's used to...
Right.
If I could add some clarification to that, one of the things that we did check is, we did check with the prosecutor's offices, and the Corlaine City Attorney's Office, their focus on concealed and display is really different than ours, they're looking to see if somebody is concealing a weapon, and then they want to see if that's valid, and see if that's something that would be illegal. Our concern on this is recognizing the law, that people that have the enhanced concealed carry permits do have a right to have a weapon, and so, we're really looking at it from the other end, so, that's kind of why we took the approach to be not all that specific on that.
I think practice-wise, which is another step, you know, out of this procedure, the practice-wise, if the word is that someone has a weapon, then we have that conversation with them, and ask about a permit, I mean, there's a big difference in the discussions I have with Corlaine PD about, you know, displaying a weapon in an argument, or someone seeing it in a bag, and it all, it all has to do with the situation, and so, those difficult conversations are going to be had, they're going to be had by our security, hopefully, they're going to be had by a school resource officer, they're going to be had by myself, depending on the situation, so, it's more of a practice than to put in policy, because if the state doesn't define that display, it's difficult for us to put that into our own procedure.
Thank you.
Don, do you have some questions?
Sure. I don't, I'm hoping what I have is current, I didn't seem to get that handout, I just have the couple from Benaya regarding the student body stuff, so, I'm looking at Mark, so I do have a couple of questions.
I have, if you need the most up to date, I brought a copy.
It was in our materials, wasn't it? Thank you.
Mine looked like pretty much the same. All right, well, I guess the first, Alex, at the bottom of page one of three, it talks about properties owned or controlled by the college. What is going to be our definition of controlled, and, because that's a slippery slope if we don't own the building, and we're just a leasing, or, as one example, how are we defining controlled?
Mark, you want to speak to that? We have that discussion.
Sure, sure, it would be, Trustee Banducci, it would be any property that we can exercise authority over, and you'll notice that the general prohibition simply is, to the extent that we can exercise authority over that venue, the general prohibition applies, however, the exceptions recognize the exceptions under the statute, so, so to the extent we, as a college, control that venue.
Okay. Alex, under the exceptions under 4A, one of the things I'm concerned about, and I spoke with Senator McKenzie this morning, actually, is as we look at those, because there's apparently an issue at Boise State, and there may be some additional legislation on this, is that while we're designating these facilities that could have 1,000 or more in attendance, in other words, capacity for 1,000 or more, whether or not they're being attended at that level or not, there may be coincident buildings, or activities, or other things that could be going on, for example, Boswell Hall, if we post that, we have to do it rather distinctly that it's just for the auditorium portion and not for the rest of that building, the rest of the building is still accessible, so there could be other functions going on while there was, say, a concert going on. So, have we delineated that, so we can differentiate between the two? Because, like, Boise State apparently had one facility, that they kind of aggregated the rooms, and said, "Okay, we're over 1,000," and they said, "No, that's not the spirit and intent," so you can only close off that specific portion of the facility from concealed weapons, but all the other parts of that building are open.
So, Trustee Banducci, we had quite a bit of discussion with the legal discussions from each institution, and the interpretation that we were giving, that if it's a venue that seats over 1,000, not aggregate, like you talked to, not taking this room, and that room, and that room, but the whole building in itself, because of the entrances and exits to that building, then that whole building itself would be on that list of an event, venue, so when you take Boswell Hall, which the core is Schuler Auditorium, it actually does include that whole building, because those hallways are the entrances and exits to that, that facility that does seat 1,000, so that's why that's listed on there, and that's what we were told is the way that all the institutions are going with.
Okay, well, like I said, I spoke with Kurt this morning, I suspect there'll be additional clarification or more legislation on that.
Yeah, and if it, you know...
I think they disagree with that interpretation.
That's one of the things going into this that we're expecting, is that there'll be more legislation next year, and the year after, and the year after, and so, yeah, I'll be ready for that.
Under the definitions on page three, the last sentence, and you guys were starting to speak to this, it says, "A firearm is not concealed when it is viewable by another person, even if the revealing, revealing, excuse me, of the firearm is inadvertent and unintentional by the carrier." So I guess, as an extension of that earlier discussion, where are we going to draw that line, or where's the common sense going to prevail?
I think, I think what you said, Trustee Banducci, is absolutely right, the common sense will prevail. The training of our security staff and the people that will intervene at that point and ask the questions about permits, our calls to law enforcement that'll be asking those questions too, that's where the common sense will prevail. If it's the unintentional revealing, you know, we have, if it's with a student, we have our Code of Conduct process, we have those kind of things where we do have common sense that prevails, and, you know, people train to do that. So, the unintentional showing of a weapon, where there's nothing else surrounding it, there's no threat, there's no anything like that, will just be treated just as that, so...
Yes, other questions, sir? Under unemployment, this one does concern me, because it says, "Unless an employee is required by the Vice President for Student Services to carry a firearm as a part of that employee's job duties, any possession or use of a firearm is not within the scope, course, and scope of employment within the college." We just, I'm a, that's a slippery slope, I think right there, we're taking away a fundamental right from a citizen, whether they're an employee or not, we just told them that they don't have the same rights as anybody else that just walks off the street. To make that a part of their employment, I think, I think that sets us up for litigation, to be quite honest. I think if I'm a math instructor, and you tell me you just took my right away, that's just been granted to me by the state as a condition of my employment, I think I have a case, so I think that's a dangerous statement right there, I think that puts us open for a challenge, certainly, and fundamentally, I hate to see anybody, I hate to see anybody have to give up a right or anything for their job.
I would agree, and I think Mark can speak to what, at least our interpretation of this is.
Sure, I'd be happy to. The intent on that is to make it clear to employees that the college does not require, sanction, or authorize them to bring a weapon or use a weapon in the course and scope of their employment. Now, we recognize that the... weapon in the course and scope of their employment. Now, we recognize that the concealed, enhanced concealed permit does provide individuals with the right to conceal weapons where they can and if they're properly permitted. But it is not, having a weapon during the course and scope of your job is not something that is authorized by the institution. And one of the things the institution will not be responsible for vicariously would be the, an employee bringing or using a weapon. That is not something that is part of their function at the institution. It doesn't take away their right under the statute, but it does separate the persons doing that, carrying a weapon, from their job as a North Idaho College employee.
Well, let me ask the question then for clarification. So if I'm a math instructor, you're telling me I'm still okay. I have a much right to carry my concealed weapon while I'm instructing, as my student who's sitting in the front row has the right to have it on his person?
Properly permitted, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got maybe a follow-up comment to that. Having been in the business of representing people who were injured in the course of negligent acts in the past, I quite think, quite frankly, think that comment of not, the firearm is not within the course and scope of employment, is a good effort by the college to try and insulate itself from liability and lawsuits that may come from the misuse of a weapon by an individual who is in the employ of NIC. I mean, and I think that's the intent of it, is to take NIC out of the picture when it comes to being responsible for the negligent use of a firearm by somebody who is not authorized to use it by the college. So I think it makes good sense from the standpoint of trying to insulate the college itself.
I see that as a proactive statement, and Mark kind of talked about that. So I understand that rationale. I just wanted to make sure I was clear how that was being applied.
I do have a question on the violations section, which is the bottom of page two. And it says, "Any college employee or student who has been found in violation of this policy may be subject to disciplinary action, including as applicable student suspension or expulsion, termination of employment or exclusion from the college. Violators may also be subject to prosecution under applicable laws." As I read that, it first relates to employees and students, and then talks about what can happen. But there's no comment about somebody who's on the campus grounds, but they're not a student or an employee. Vendors that come on, people from the public generally, they're all going to be subject to this same policy, I would hope. And I think that our, we ought to have something within our policy that says that the college has the right to remove them if they're in violation of the policy, even though they're not a student or an employee. And quite frankly, I see no reference to the general public or segments of the public who may even be authorized to be on the campus for other reasons, because we've categorized it as student and employee only. And so I'm a little concerned that that's too narrowly drawn.
And I agree with you. My suggestion would be that they, the wording will be trespassed from the college would be added. Because at that point, if they came back, then you would be looking at criminal violations.
That was my question. What are the criminal laws for somebody, a member of the public?
You're trespassed?
Yeah. Just be escorted off the campus, right?
Well, you're escorted, but you're also given clear direction with someone of authority over the campus grounds that you're trespassed. And if you come back, that could lead to your arrest.
But for Chairman Howard's question, sir, your point was a member of the public. So they would be trespassed at that point and then escorted off. Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure. I would love to see in the policy so that it's clear to everybody who reads it, that this applies to the entire scope, people who enter the responsible area of the college. And right now, I see it too restrictive. So to say trespassed still may be something that is confusing to people. I'm not trespassing. I'm coming on here because I was invited on to deliver coke to the coke machine, you know. But you can't bring a weapon onto the campus. So I understand the concept of declaring them in trespass and then putting them in the status. I'm just, I want to give our security people the authority when that happens to just simply say, you know, you're off the campus with the weapon in any event. And I don't see us having that authority under this violation. So I don't know that we have to restrict it to just people who have been declared in trespass. I think we ought to declare it that anybody who's on the campus in violation of this can be removed.
Mr. Chair, if I may, but that's really the same semantics. That's how you remove someone and have some teeth to it. You have to declare that if they don't leave, they're trespassing. Otherwise, you have no teeth.
Well, if we have a policy that says they shouldn't be on here, that's how we put teeth in. But in any event, you may be able to help us, Mark, but I'd like to broaden that category.
And I understand that. And I'll tell you, that was a subject of a fair amount of debate. And ultimately, the conclusion was that the policy does provide the general prescription that weapons are not on campus with the legal exceptions. And ultimately, I think we concluded that the procedures, the procedures relate to our ability to control students and impose or follow the procedures with respect to employees and students on campus. Third, people coming in, and we did discuss this, and as trustee Wood has noted, we determined that if we did have a problem with a third party coming on campus and there was, what we concluded was a violation, that we would go through the, we did have remedies that we could follow, the trespassing, call the local law enforcement and go that route. I don't, I guess at the end of the day, I guess we could add additional language to it, but I'm not sure it gets us any farther than we would otherwise go.
Yes. Chairman Howard, the distinction here is that somebody carrying a weapon on campus, depending on the situation, is only a violation of policy. So if we put into procedure that they could be punished by law or that they will be punished by law for violating our policy, it puts us in jeopardy. So the way things happen now, whether it's a weapon or not, somebody, a third party, someone that's not a student, staff or employee, comes onto campus, does something we don't want them to do, does something that's against our policy, they're asked to leave campus. If they leave campus, then they leave campus. And that's, that is, that's it, because they're just in violation of our policy. If they're in violation of law, we contact law enforcement. Now, if they're violation of our policy and we ask them to leave campus and they refuse, then they're in violation of the trespass law. We call PD. PD gives them official trespass. In Idaho, that's good for one year. Then they have broken the law. So that's where these delineations come from. And that's why we left it where we left it. But I do see that it could be easily, if we wanted to add, without being too prescriptive there.
Well, if you put down any college employee or student or member of the public...
There you go. Yeah, that's where I was going.
Then you've got what you need. You've included the broader class of people. My difficulty is, and again, sometimes we are too captive from our past. And my past is that as a lawyer reading this, and if you, if I was representing somebody who were trying to get off, I'd say, you didn't talk about members of the public. And I think we got to give members of the public and everybody fair warning. They don't read this stuff, but we got to assume that they do read it. And when they read it, it's going to be fairly clear. And I think it's not. I'd like to see us add or member of the public. So I would make a motion if nobody else is going to.
Do you really need to make a motion?
I shouldn't.
No, I...
We need to make a motion to amend this policy.
Oh, even though it's first reading, we can't just send it back with recommendations?
We can do that, or we can amend it right here.
Yeah, it's just, I, what would your pleasure be?
I would like to see somebody make a motion to add or member of the public, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One more question, if I may, sir.
Real quick. Alex, real quick. Under privately owned property, you've got individuals must also comply with all posted signs and occupancy rules on private property being leased and used by NIC. Does that differ somewhere from what we talked about as being controlled by NSC, the property? Is that a different class of property? Or is that a clarification of that?
Yeah, it's a different class of property. For example, the Sandpoint Center, where we lease a couple offices in there, and then there are other businesses, and there's the owner of that building, so we don't control that whole property. That's up to the owner to set forth those. So if they want to set forth those rules, then they can. That's the difference between controlled, owned and privately owned.
Okay. So they could walk in with their concealed weapon there if they were properly permitted, and that would be beyond our scope because, okay.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion on amendment to procedures. Under policy 7.0401, weapons on college property, and under procedure, under the employment clause on page two, or excuse me, I'm sorry, violation at the bottom of page two, where, I will just read it, Alex, any college employee or student, I'd like to see inserted or member of the public right there, who has been found in violation of this policy. And then go on to there. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Meyer seconds it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we would add that language to the procedure and the first reading on the policy. Any changes to the policy?
Mr. Chair, do we need a second reading on it then, if we've fixed it up the way we want?
No, if you make a motion.
Ready for that?
I am, Mr. Chair. We know that you need to get this out to the students and the public. So I would make a motion that we accept this, the amendments for the first reading in the interest of making this available before July 30, July 1st. So I make a motion to approve policy 7.0401, weapons on college property.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Thank you.
Meyer seconds that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Having faith in your training.
Thank you, Alex, for all the hard work.
More to be done, I'll bet.
That motion on the policy or the procedure or both?
Both. The amendment was in there.
That's what I seconded.
Yeah, she did.
The next old business item is the second reading on the general fund operating budget.
Give one moment, please. Trustee Howard, or sorry, Chairman Howard, trustees, guests, we are here for the second reading of the budget. I will start off by mentioning that the only changes we made to the budget were a recommendation to fund the discussion that we had at the board workshop related to the salary increases and the SRO officer. So I will walk through that, that that is the main difference between the first reading and the second reading, or the only difference between the first reading. Our original FY15 recommendation was to fund a step increase for all full-time faculty and staff, which is approximately a 2% increase in pay. We also recommended a 2% increase for all part-time employees. There was a 1% one-time mandatory merit payment that was mandated by the state. And we are also requesting a one FTE school resource officer. So that was the original recommendation that the college put forth. The cost of that recommendation is $600,000 for a step increase for all full-time employees. A 2% increase for part-time is about $84,000. The 1% state mandated merit increase is $116,000, and the school resource officer is a $60,000 expense. I did want to note that that $600,000 step increase, if we were to give it, it would cover the 1% mandate that the state gave us for a 1% increase to the base. So again, this is just the original recommendation and the cost of the original recommendation. We went through that in the first reading and in the budget workshop. So now we have, we have created a balanced budget. And included in the balanced budget is a 1%, the 1% mandated merit from the state at $116,000, a 1% mandate, state mandated base increase with a cost of $300,000, a 1% increase to all part-time employees, which would include adjunct instructors as well as part-time staff, and the one FTE school resource officer for $60,000. The way that we funded this for this discussion was to chart, make a $2 per credit tuition increase for all students. In addition to that, we are recommending a $6 per credit tuition increase for the out-of-district students. Our caveat is we would like to request that if enrollment decline is less than 7%, the budget is based on a 10% enrollment decline for next fiscal year. If that decline comes in at 7%, we would recommend implementing the full step, which would cost an additional $342,000. A question was raised, what if the enrollment decline is greater than 10% for next fiscal year? If we had an additional 2% decrease in enrollment, it would result in $250,000 less of tuition revenue. The possible reductions that we identified to cover that shortfall would be to reduce the innovation fund that currently has a balance of $35,000. We would suggest moving, in FY13, the board allocated a 1% property tax increase to the capital investment reserve to be held and to be used if there were circumstances, extreme circumstances, that we would need to move it to the operating budget. We would recommend doing that at this time if that, if we were to see a more significant decline than we've already budgeted for. We would also look at a hiring freeze and reducing or restricting travel. So stop me if you, stop me if you need to. So I tried to simplify these slides a little bit to nod to the fact that we've already had these discussions a few times. We began our budget, our base budget that we began our planning cycle with is last year's budget, which is $44,752,411. The reductions that we have taken from that revenue budget include the enrollment shortfall for the current year at one point, approximately 1.2 million, as well as the 10% decline for next year that we're anticipating, which is another 1.2 million. So we have two point, the magic 2.3 number that we've been talking about all spring is for this year's enrollment shortfall, as well as the up to 10% shortfall next year in enrollment. Then we had some increases to our revenue base, one of which is the $2 per credit tuition increase that I discussed earlier, is the funding method for these mandated salary increases. The $2 per credit tuition increase for all students would be $234,000. The $6 per credit tuition increase for out-of-district students would be $128,574. We had the state general fund increase, which we did not know we were going to get at the time we started. Our budget planning is $311,500. The PTAe allocation increase was $229,000. We also are forecasting approximately $240,000 for new property on the rules in the county. That is based on last year's property valuation and this year's levy rate for the college. And then we are going to begin with the other two community colleges in the state. All three community colleges are going to begin charging out-of-district tuition for all professional technical students. And that, we estimate that'll generate another $190,000 of new revenue. In total, the new revenue is 130, well, $1,333,000, which brings our new revenue budget up to 40, or down to $43,716,642. You have the much more detailed versions in your packets. I'm trying to simplify this as we go through it. Are we all right to keep going? I know I'm going fast, so I don't want to, I don't want to go too fast. So when we talk about the $2 per credit tuition increase to students, that would make a 12-credit student would be paying $1,511 next year per semester. As you can see from our comparator institutions, we are still one of the lowest-cost colleges in the in the region and in the state. So this is another way to look at the tuition budget. This is more of the style that you're used to. So I'm comparing the proposed FY '15 budget to the FY '14 budget. You'll see the $2 million decrease in tuition and fees. That's the 2.3 million shortfall reduced down by the new tuition revenue that we're showing for the two increases that we're suggesting, and then all the other categories I just discussed about the increases in the other categories. In the operating expense area, we have a slight decrease in salaries and benefits. We had a larger decrease the last time we looked at these numbers because we had not factored back in this 1% and 1%, the 1% 1% that's coming from the state. We had over $600,000 in salary savings for changes with adjunct, reduction of adjunct instructors, as well as some vacant positions that we were going to, are going to be held vacant for the next fiscal year, but that's been offset by some of these salary requirements. Same thing with benefits. Equipment inventory, those numbers and general expense numbers haven't changed since the first reading. The fee-based budgets only changed very slightly. I take that back. I don't think these fee budgets have changed since we did the last reading. They are not affected in the same way that the General Fund budget is. We budgeted for their increases through the General Fund at this point in time. We'll figure that out when we get approval on how we're gonna, what we're gonna do with And then the service unit budgets, there's notation at the bottom that the service units, oh, let me go back here, I'm sorry. The fee-based budgets include the ASNC budget, the Student Health Services budget, the Student Activities and Recreation budget, the Athletics budget, and the Commencement budget. Our service units, again, we talked about this before there, this is the Auxiliary Services, Workforce Training, Lakeside Children's Center, Campus Mail and Copy, Campus Security and Fleet Services. So they all reduce their budgets as compared to last fiscal year. Many of them had changes in the fee-based budgets as well, some of the service unit budgets, they're going to suffer from the enrollment changes as well, so that's why the changes and reductions in their budget. Finally, we have the Grants budget. These are just based on our current grant situation. We don't factor in any grants that we're hoping to get, but these are all the grants that we're currently managing and our expectation of the amounts. Most of the federal revenue, about $4 million of that federal revenue is covered by Headstart and Area Agency, and the other million is for, most of it's aerospace and a couple other federal grants. The one note that I wanted to make about the Grant slide is that we were able to negotiate with Headstart to increase the indirect costs that Headstart pays back to the college in support of the financial and HR services that they provide, that we provide to them, and we were able to do that without compromising their programs in any way. And it was a very collegiate discussion between their organization and our office to make sure that we could, we actually did a process whereby we counted out how, what percentage of the workload they did as compared to the total workload that we have, and did an allocation of salaries out to create that number, so that the $32,000 that they now support us with every year is an accurate account of the amount of time and effort it takes between the Business Office and the HR Office to support them. This is the Total Institutional Budget, represents all the categories we just talked about, just under $60 million a year. That was really fast, so I'm expecting a lot of questions. No? I'm just gonna shake your head.
Chair, can we go back to this previous slide, which was the total, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Christie.
Well, I, just one quick question, and then I'm sure we'll get into some others. Sarah, I've been, first of all, I want to commend you for all your hard work. I know what this process has been like for you. Maybe I don't know to every detail, but I know that you really dedicated yourself to the college and trying to sort this budget, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Wood.
I'd like to, I've had a question about this for a while, and you're the person that can answer it. Let's go to page seven.
Of the packet.
Yeah. And you'd be, you know, my favorite fund, the Capital Investment Reserve. So in the column...
That's the ones that's untouchable, right?
Right, well, according to some of the trustees. Under FY 2010, when we did an transfer to investment of 1.25 million, I don't see that show up again. So where did we transfer that to? And how's the investment doing?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Wood, we invested a portion of those funds because we knew, we anticipated that the tax revenue that came in, came in before the actual purchase was fully complete, so we went ahead and invested the money. At the time, the market was really favorable to doing that, so we invested the money. What we did is when we paid off the mill site early, we liquidated that investment and took the proceeds, and the earnings from that investment, and applied it to the purchase.
Okay, thank you very much.
Always comforting to know where it went, isn't it?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Todd?
As part of our discussions, we were talking about the sources of funds to make up the $352,000, and one of the things we had talked about was possibly tapping our reserve. Now, if I remember correctly, this was the reserve we were talking about, correct?
Sorry.
Does that sound right?
Well, some of us suggested it.
Well, that's an important question, because I guess my next question is, when do we go back and discuss the proposals to how we raise those funds?
I'm not sure. Who's the question addressed to?
You, sir, I guess. What's the proper order here?
And what's your question again?
Well, I'm in disagreement of the funding recommendation, so I want to know when we discuss that.
Funding recommendation in terms of tuition increases, in terms of what, so what portion of it?
The tuition increases to the in-district students.
In-district students?
Yes, sir. I don't want to increase the tuition to the in-district students.
I want to be sure I heard you right, Todd, say it again.
Well, we've been talking about trying to equalize a little bit with the other four counties that we're subsidizing, okay, from the taxpayers in Cootney County. So my thought is, while we're going to slowly try to step up the tuition to the other four counties, our out-of-district students, if you will, I would like to hold the line, not increase the tuition for the in-district students. In other words, the Cootney County students, I don't want to increase. When I looked at that chart, Sarah's correct, we do fare very favorably against the other colleges, and CWI did have an increase, but if you notice, CSI did not increase, Spokane Falls Community College, Spokane Community College, they were all 0000. For, at least for our in-district, I'd like to stay at 00 also. Now, if we do that, though, clearly we're going to lose some revenue, and we have to make a decision of, do we go to $6 with the out-of-district, or do we add that 2 back on there and make it $8 total for the out-of-district students? And then we are going to have a little bit of a shortfall, which then maybe we do tap that reserve fund, with the idea that if that supplemental request that we're submitting to the state, should we get any of that money, we make it our first priority to backfill that reserve that we've tapped to make up that shortfall.
So are you making a proposal?
I am. That's my proposal, that contingent on the supplemental budget request that we make with the other two community colleges, to potentially backfill that reserve, that we still draw from that, knowing that that may or may not happen, that we keep the in-district tuition at zero, and then either charge $6 or $8 additionally in out-of-district tuition. And I'm open to that discussion on the six versus eight, if you think eight's too steep at one time.
The money lost by not charging the in-county tuition, where would that be made up from?
We would take it out of our reserve fund, sir. One-time...
Capital improvement, I think this was discussing.
That's by way of a motion, then?
Yes, sir. But I'm looking for feedback first before I actually make the motion, I guess, sir.
I mean, and we can discuss it first, or we can have, if there's a second, we can discuss it.
That was a second, that's a, and it says I would like to discuss...
Got a question?
Yeah, no, no, just a comment, is that we look at about 12 credits, $2 an hour, we look at how we stack up against all of our competitors in this region, and we look at that, at a 1.6% increase, we're talking about a mandate from the state of a 1% increase for salary. That's kind of a cross, that's a fair assessment of what we would put on there, and we go up and down, up and down, and there's been years that we've held this. This is a year where times are pretty tough right now. We've had some discussions in the years before. We lost 3%, I believe it was in 2013, 11% in 2014, and we're forecasting another 10% reduction. That's 24, 25% over a three-year window. We have to step that up on our out-of-state tuition. If we do it all at one time, I think it's going to draw a lot of attention, and part of this is to raise a level of awareness that we're outside Cootney County, we're not getting compensated for this. So I think we have to do that, but I think that it's appropriate for us to balance our budget. And I would be opposed to using this fund that we've set aside for building funds to one-time do this. Once you get into that, it's very easy to use this. Again, we've cut our conference and changed conference, which cost us $100,000. It's part of this reduction that we're saying to balance our budget is to drive $300,000 out of our utilities, which we know that that's probably going to come back and bite us if we have an off cold winter, and we've talked a lot of times about that. We've cut a lot of our contingencies out of this and cut right to the bone, and if something happens, then we're in financial trouble. We've taken $150,000 out of our plant director's budget. What happens when we lose control of our plants and we need to refill those positions? So these are all, when you start talking about a $500,000 that we've taken out of our budget, where we can't assure you that that's going to level out, I think number one is we have to have the self-discipline to balance a budget, it is, and I think we should not be going into our contingency fund, which is our capital fund, which is what it's used for. So that's my input, so.
What would you think of like a $10 to the out-of-district and even just a $1? I guess my point is, I really want to keep the in-district as low as possible right now relative, because those same people are paying the taxes that are subsidizing everybody else.
Well, based on this calculation, Todd, it says that we're going to increase the out-of-state district three times the amount of money that we're charging in county tuition. So we are penalizing these out-of-county students right now at this differential between the two and the six, and we'll probably need to do something again in the next year to be able to move this forward. I think that it raises a level of awareness within our state that we need to be able to get some subsidy or put some pressure on the out-of-counties to participate in some of the funding towards this college. That's what we've been talking about, so.
Hi, Judy.
In looking at the tuition chart, thanks, Sarah, for putting that up. The CSI folk have maintained the same tuition, 11, 12, 13, 14, and now this year they've raised theirs a little bit. Am I reading that correctly? To 1380.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, yes, they did increase their tuition $5 a credit. CWI is not doing an increase to their tuition, and the reason that Spokane Community College and Spokane Falls Community College are static is they, we have been unable to get them to commit to us even an estimate of what they're doing for an increase. I did find today on the Washington State Technical Colleges website that they are doing a tuition increase, but it has not trickled down for us to see exactly, because there's fees involved that that doesn't translate directly to Spokane, the Spokane Community Colleges, but we are doing a tuition increase.
So we're not apples to apples yet, because we don't know what the other apple is.
The other apple has not fallen from the tree yet.
So our closest educational institutions here are not CSI and CWI, it's the two in Spokane, which are 25-plus percent more tuition than we are right now. So we're still the value, we're still close to home, and we understand that the funding mechanism from the state for CSI and CWI are different, and we're in an uncomfortable position because we're not being funded of this. So I think that is what was proposed here, which is a modest $2 increase for our locals and $6 increase for out-of-state, I think it's a good approach. I think it's a balanced approach.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Todd. In order for us to get this in a way that we can resolve this issue, because we really need to...
Ron, I just had a question.
If you want to make a motion on what your proposal is, if you can get a second, then we can discuss it and vote on it.
Well, I just had a thought, you know, if we were to go down that path, Ron, as you're proposing, I'd still then like to see that we earmark, commit, whatever word you want to use, that should we secure some funds in this supplemental budget request, that then maybe we could go back and rescind that tuition increase on the in-district students. You know, so I'd like to have some sort of caveat with this, if we could, if we move forward, to balance it now with the idea that we could still provide some relief to them, should the funds become available.
I guess the question is to be whether we ought to ask the administration, is that doable? I mean, can you go back after you find out whether or not that supplemental's been approved? Are you going to refund tuition? Joe?
Mr. Chair, the supplemental was for very specific items, and we don't really have flexibility to go in and then pick and choose how we want to change that, should it be funded. In addition to that, the supplemental is a one-time funding, it's not added to the base, and so that would create a void going into the following year where we would have to make up that one-time funding.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Christie.
Well, I, you know, I can appreciate trustee Banducci trying to keep the tuition low for students. I really believe that's what he's talking about. I had a couple of questions. One is, under the current proposal, how does that impact financial aid? And not really a question, but more of a statement, that we don't have the pie chart that we normally have, Sarah, but I, off the top of my head, it seems to me that county taxpayers are edged out tuition and state funding just a little bit. Seems like county taxpayers pay a little out of the pie chart. And so we come up with this dilemma every year in asking the students to understand that it does cost money to go to school, that we can't ask the taxpayers all the time to pick up the additional cost, and we would love to ask the state to, but they don't listen. So anyway, so that's kind of a statement. Nobody wants to raise tuition, it's painful, we want to keep the doors open to students. So back to the financial aid question.
What is the question?
How does an increase impact financial aid, what students are able to apply for?
Would like to answer that. Mr. Stanley.
Mr. Chairman and trustees, the budget that's calculated each year for financial aid follows whatever we set for tuition and fees, and so it's based on whatever we charge. Their eligibility for additional money will go up according to the same rate that we set tuition and fees, so it's adjusted along those same lines. It's always indexed against the cost of the institution, so it'll go up and down and follow that.
Potentially more debt.
I'd like to move this along and put a motion on the floor, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to reference page number 11 on the balanced budget that says that we will take the 1% mandated merit, the 1% mandated pay increase, the 1% part-time, and the one full-time school resource officer, which give us a shortfall of roughly $352,000 that we go, and we put the $2 per credit tuition increase to the local students in a six out-of-state, which will balance our budget, and that I would not recommend the gamble that we're talking about with a 7%, if it's less than 7% that we do this or not do that, I would not recommend that. So that's my motion, sir.
Any second for that?
I have an amendment.
Well, David, you got a second. Well, David, you got to second it first, and then we amend it. You can ask him to change his motion if you'd like. Then you don't have to.
He won't.
What I have to do is just say, second it, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay.
I might surprise the heck out of you.
I second it.
Discussion, you have some discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is something that I personally struggle with. The budget this year has been very difficult, and you've all been here for it, so you know that it's been painful. Last year, at this time, I was absolutely opposed to removing a step increase. To me, the step increase is very different than COLA. COLA is the cost of living adjustment, which is necessary, always, but it, it is that area for an organization that if you just absolutely cannot do it, then the COLA is, we just don't fund it, and you hope to make it up in future years. The step, to me, is a statement that's been made by the college to the employees when they're hired on, and they follow a salary schedule. And the salary schedule says, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll give an example, by year seven, you're at this point in your wages. Say by year 13, 14, you're at this point, and then maybe you're maxed out at year 18, 20. What we effectively did last year was say, if you've been here 12 years, that doesn't matter anymore. We're going to treat you like you've been here seven years. And so that doesn't sit well with me. So if there is an opportunity, because enrollment projection, it turns out the decline is less than we had hoped, then I, I would like to bring back, this is not a new item, this is bringing us back to where we were last year, and so I think that's the fair thing to do.
Let me offer maybe a compromise to the two positions, not recommending it and recommending it. I don't think there's anything that prohibits us from reopening the budget. So if we have a, a, decrease in enrollment that's only 7%, let's reopen the budget and see what we're going to do with it, right? Rather than trying to make some prediction now about what it might be, because there might be other things that happen in the, in the meantime that would require us to make adjustments. So rather than doing that sort of in the abstract, I would prefer that if, if we see a enrollment decline of less than 7%, that we reopen the budget and see what we're going to do with the money that is changed in the, in the budget. Same thing goes for if it is greater than 10%. There was a contingency plan to take the, from the 1% property tax. We may need to do that, but I'd like to see us do that when the increase is greater than 10%. So we reopen the budget when those figures are available to us, and we make a, we make a conscious decision based upon the numbers that we have then. So based on the numbers that we have now and working with the 10%, if we pass this budget as the motion and the second, but that doesn't mean we can't reopen the budget in two or three months and look at it if the picture changes. Todd?
Two thoughts, and the first one, I don't think we can do anything about, because the young men that are sitting here are unprepared for this. I, I'd love to know what the students think of another potential tuition increase after the couple three we put on them last year, and I don't know if Rich or Benioe want to take a shot at that.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's appropriate.
I understand. And the, and the second thought is, Joe, what you just said is, I have to tell you, is a little different than what I thought I heard in a couple prior discussions, and then when I brought it up about the supplemental, and then we talked about it. I'd like to see the list then again of exactly what we're allocating those funds for, because that number has moved around so much, but now we're back to that $3 million plus or minus, because the four-year institution's got it, so the three junior colleges are going after it, and I'd like to now see what that's all earmarked. Originally, that was kind of under the auspices of security, because we were given the unfunded mandate, but we realized, hey, really, we don't need to spend that money on security. So now I want to know what our wish list looks like if we get this money, or some portion of it, because I, I thought that money was going to be available for some different things, and we actually threw that into discussion previously, so I'm, that paradigm has shifted, at least in my mind. So I, I want to see the supplemental budget before it's submitted, that formal request right now, and I want a line item of everything and why we're requesting that.
There may be something we can do, but not certainly at this meeting. Ron?
Well, I think that, Mr. Chairman, I think that your suggestion to go ahead and let's balance our budget today, and let's don't gamble tomorrow, but if, if our enrollment does not deteriorate at the level that we think it's going to happen against the national statistics, and that we do not have any abnormal expenses that were, we've taken out, that now we have a surplus, I would surely entertain going back and, and giving this to the, to the faculty.
And the same would go if we do get a supplemental, and if there is an opportunity to make decisions about how it's to be applied, we can do that by reopening the budget. So there are future contingencies that I don't think we have to decide today. When they occur, then let's, let's look to reopening the budget to determine what to do with them. Judy?
Just thinking that through and liking the idea, what about, how does our timeline work for when we learn, and I don't know, when we learn, as to when we learn that, and then can we do it, sort of timeline for reopening the budget and dealing with a step increase? If we don't learn about the supplemental till, I don't know when.
It's actually not, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's, it's actually not the supplemental. That's just, Rutter says a request to J-FAC, so it's, yeah, an enrollment. So I would be curious when that is too.
Well, any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'm going to say it. Sir, I, I think it's wrong to, here we are, we're, all respect to the teachers, but here we're going to prioritize the raises to the teachers versus the tuition relief to the students, and we're putting it on their back. I disagree with that as a priority, but I'm one vote. I think it's reversed, but that's my opinion. I'm students and property owner protection.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Christie.
Todd, and I certainly appreciate that advocacy. The 1% is a mandate, so we have no option. So it's either we, either we increase tuition, we increase taxes, or, or we, yeah, we can't even talk about that other option. We don't have support for that. So we're back to tuition or taxes.
But what we're saying is if we have these extra funds, what would be our first priority in relief back?
No, but I think, I think where we're at with this is if there are additional funds, we will reopen the budget and, and decide what to do with it at that time. I think we're leaving that option open.
And my question was, the timing can work to make that happen?
But I'm not sure that the, we have a whole lot of choices in that. When the, when the funds become available, we're going to have to decide what to do with them.
When will we know, Mr. Chair, the enrollment projection?
Right.
That's the question.
Projection is a reality.
Yeah, the reality of the enrollment, not the projection.
Mr. Chairman and trustee, would we have, the reporting period, we'll know generally, it used to be a 10-day count. They've extended that until later in the semester, but really, our numbers are firm after the second week of the semester. So two weeks into the semester, we'll have a real good sense of where we're at. We've passed the deadlines for adding and dropping and non-attendance and non-payment. So after the second week of fall semester, we'll have a great sense about where our fall enrollment is.
Where that, where is that on the calendar? Sorry, sir, Mr. Chair. Approximately where is that on the calendar?
September.
Yeah, the end of, the end of the first week in September.
The thing that discomforts me is a, it comforts me, not discomforts me, that at that point, we have a sense of how our enrollment is held up, and therefore what our funds will be, that at that point, we could bring it back and talk about it in our September board meeting, 24th issue, whatever it was, and begin to take action that could begin in October.
Yeah, and I think we have to remind ourselves, and we probably will at that time, that one semester does not a year make. So we still don't know what the spring and summer semesters are going to be. So, but we'll have to make that decision in the light of the information we have at that time.
Mr. Chair, one quick question. President Dunlap, do we have kind of a timeline on the supplemental budget request, when we'll know about that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Sarah can help corroborate this. I thought that we need to clarify this. We're kind of mixing two different budgetary terms here. Supplemental requests will be for this current fiscal year that starts July 1. That supplemental request is a much smaller line request that will be primarily for the security costs in implementing Senate Bill 1254. The line item request that you're talking about of, quote, several million dollars, will be a line item request for the fiscal '16 budget that will go to the legislature in January. Should that be funded, we wouldn't see that till July 1 of '15 for fiscal '16. So any monies you may or may not receive on a supplemental for this current year would not be taken up. Supplementals are approved by, approved or rejected by J-FAC in January.
Follow on.
Of January of '15 would be.
And what was that number marked for the security?
Where are we at, Alex?
$60,000, isn't it? It's coming back in.
I want to say it's approximately $60,000 at this point for that, for the current year supplemental, current year being the one that starts July 1. So the line item request for the three community colleges jointly, under the 60% goal initiative was $1 million each for a total of $3 million between the three community colleges. That's, line item is, is very different from supplemental.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, Mark.
There is a motion and a second to, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just, maybe I'm easily confused by things, but I just want to get clarification on the motion. Trustee Nielsen's motion was, it went through the items on page 11, and, and do I understand that to be as a motion to accept the administration's FY '15 budget proposal?
Up to the line where it's balanced, where it says the difference is $10,393. So that includes the full, the three 1% increase, the full-time resource officer, and then with the, to balance that, the two sources of funding come from the two increases for $2 to the store there and $6 to the out-of-state, which brings it, the 352 shortfall to 362 in revenue gives us $10,000. Okay?
Right. Is that clear?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We have a motion and a second. Pardon?
If you're clear on it, that, what, what the motion is great. I just want to make sure we have.
Thank you for the clarification.
And that's above this term that says this decline less than, where that has this, the gamble portion of this in there. It's above that line, so it stops at $10,393.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And, and just for discussion purposes, we're all in agreement that in first part of October, we will be looking at amending the budget if the enrollment decline is less than anticipated.
Or more. Yeah, I mean, we may, we may need to do something.
But also, Christie, I think that we also have to look at some of this, these vacancies of the director of the plant and all this type of stuff. If we get all the way in September and we find out we can't manage the budget as high as it is, and besides not, you know, maybe that there is a, the shortfall or the, the reduction in enrollment goes from what we're anticipating is 10, goes down to 8, and we say, well, gosh, how much is left over? We might find out through the budgeting process. We have nothing left over, because we have no contingency we have. We've cut this down to the bone as far as utility costs and whatever, and then at that point, we'd probably, our recommendation would be is that we don't have anything to give.
Sure.
So I think it'd be based on a positive balance on the bottom line, so.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the FY '15 budget proposal contained on page 11 of 22 of our packet, above the figure $10,393, which is the title difference. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In favor of it? So it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, next.
Chairman Howard?
Yes.
May, may I make a comment real quick? I want to just say thank you for trying to involve the students in this process, and as we continually increase the burden on, on the students, that our voice be continually be brought into this process, and I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item on the agenda is sabbatical leaves for academic year 2014-15. Lita?
Trustee Howard, members of the board, in accordance with board policy 3.04.02, Cheryl Cunningham, Lori Olson-Horswell, and Alan Lamb have applied for a one semester sabbatical leave at full pay for the next academic year. You, in your packet, have a detailed proposal for each sabbatical request with attachments and letters of support. Cheryl Cunningham, just in brief, Cheryl Cunningham's proposal is related to continuing to pursue her doctoral degree, and her research interest is in developmental mathematics, and that has been Cheryl's area of teaching expertise here at North Idaho College, and she is very invested in attempting to improve our math remediation. Lori Olson-Horswell's proposal is related to Humanities 101. She has a number of proposals that she would like to introduce to support the instruction in Humanities 101. One that is of particular interest to, to me is to put on an online virtual tour that supports the Humanities 101 course that we have been lacking, actually, for a number of years. And Alan's Lamb, Lamb's proposal deals with really incorporating the concept of sustainability in all our sociology courses and our sociology program. There is a lack of literature and textbook resources in this particular area, and Alan would like to make sure that we have the resources to support that concept throughout our sociology offerings. Dr. Dunlap and I have reviewed the recommendations and are recommending to the board that you approve these sabbaticals for the 2014-15 academic year. I'm looking for questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Lita, and the proposals look, look interesting. In the financial impact, then, there are financial implications in our tab. You describe the $12,000 needed to replace each of the faculty folk who are on sabbatical. So that's three times the 12,000 to reach 36,000 is what we probably need to allow for financial impact.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, you are correct, and I do believe that that amount has been included in the budget that was presented to you just previously.
Because here it describes 12,000, but that's per faculty, and so it should be total of 36, which we factored into the budget already. Thank you.
You are correct, and next year I'll make sure that I, as I come forward, I don't know if it will be that amount or not, but I'll make sure that it's the exact amount that would be required, rather than.
Mm-hmm. Lita, I know that you just mentioned this, but you used the word "I believe." Do you know whether or not the 36,000 is contained within the present budget? Can, can you tell us, Sarah?
Trustee Howard, board members, yes, it is included.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to really, once again, make one of my statements. We're an education facility, higher learning, and professional development is incredibly important. That kind of development comes back into the classroom, and that's what matters. And our faculty have proven time and time again what their skills do for students. So I, especially since it's already in the budget we just approved, I would very much support sabbaticals, and I'll make a motion that we approve the sabbatical leaves for academic year 2014-2015.
Meyer seconds the motion.
Seconded, any discussion?
Go ahead, Ron, you go first.
Is there any other related expenses that will be incurred over and above the replacement as far as travel expenses, personal expenses, supplies?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Nielsen, no. Anything associated with it is of cost of the faculty member. We simply pay for their salary and obviously their benefits. They, they are considered full-time while they are on sabbatical.
I just, I, I, you know what, is it, uh, there's, when we went through the tenure process, I felt like this was something that it was a very emotional, uh, roller coaster ride, and we came to an understanding of what it was and the difference that was here. And I think that, uh, that it was an exercise for all, and it's behind us now. Sabbaticals, the concept of what it does, continued education and all that type of stuff, I, I think this is what we're all working for, is for continued education. But we go back to what we just looked at, which is a 24% reduction in headcount. We look at, uh, the cuts that we're making here and the additional burden that we're putting on our students. Is this the time that we're going to spend another $36,000, um, that could be something that we could put aside and say, okay, it isn't, $36,000 isn't a lot of money, but $36,000 is sending a statement that, that we were not going to look at every option that we have to take cutback on some of the expenses, so that's my point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My, my first thought is that I think the cart was before the horse. I've already approved a budget, which I didn't realize already included the $36,000. And now after I've supposedly approved the budget that funds the $36,000, now I'm being asked to approve the $36,000 expenditure. To me, it would have made sense if I would have been asked to approve the $36,000 expenditure, and then if I had approved us as a board, had approved that, then it would have been inserted into the budget as a line item. So now I'm looking at, I actually had $36,000 more in that budget, that we could have massaged those numbers a little more, and maybe I wouldn't have had to put as much of a burden on the students. I, I guess I follow Ron's thought, is that if we're in this dire strait right now, and I, I have to change conferences, and I have to do all these things, and I've got these emergency budgets, and I'm, I'm increasing tuition, I, I have to wonder, I'm paying $36,000 to take three teachers out of the classroom. Again, supporting higher education, I, as you know, I have my advanced degrees, and I'm, I'm an educated man, and I appreciate that, and I spent a lot of time firing those degrees, and I know it's quite a process, and we continue to, to try to improve ourselves. But again, it's a, it's a message being sent, and I think Mr. Nielsen's point is that at this time, not being opposed to sabbaticals in general or in concept, but at this time, that maybe the timing is not great, and that, and then maybe this isn't the right call at this time, just in lieu of everything else that we've been dancing for the last three months. And 36,000, it is actually a lot, because that's almost how much we added back in. It was 42,000 to get that 1% in for the part-time teachers that I advocated and pushed for, because originally that wasn't going to be in there. And I said, hey, we can find 42,000, not knowing I had another 36 hide in that budget somewhere. And I know Mr. Browning and others were glad that we were able to do that, but it was at a price, and we put a little more burden back on the students' backs.
Clarifications, 36,000 isn't a lot of, is a lot of money, my friend.
For us peasants, it is.
And that relates to 60 million, so that was...
I understand. Us paupers, that's a lot.
That's right.
Uh, clarification on the sabbatical. When someone takes a sabbatical, do we have any golden handcuffs that they're going to be with us for a certain amount of time to help ameliorate the expense?
Trustee Howard, excuse me, Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, yes, there is, uh, the exact number, it just slipped out of my mind, I'm sorry.
But there is some...
There is, and it's, it's, and they repay the money if they leave within a certain amount of time. I want to say there, somebody help me, is it three year, three or five years they must remain at North Idaho College, and then if they leave before that time, they have to repay the sabbatical, the cost of the sabbatical.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think if you really step back and look at the big picture of these sabbaticals and what they're intended for, um, classroom teaching should be current. We don't want to be stale for our students. And if you look at these proposals, they're coming back with real value to the classroom. That's the big picture. That's what we do here at North Idaho College. We give the best education possible to our students. And, um, yeah, it's been a tough budget year, but this is not the area to cut, not instruction. This is going to bring real value back to the students, and so I, I am just a strong advocate for sabbaticals.
Mr. Chair? You know, Christie, I appreciate that, and I appreciate people that go to night school, and I appreciate people doing on the weekends. I appreciate people in different industries. For example, I'm in the securities and insurance industries, and I have a tremendous amount of continuing education, and just the amount of certification that I'll go through this summer to be able to work with seniors and do Met Advantage plans, and because of the Obamacare, and working with the exchanges, I'll, I'll spend literally hundreds of hours in addition to my full-time job. And sometimes that's just how it has to be, and you still need to better yourself and improve and train and help your students or your clients, whatever the case may be. So I don't know where you draw that line. It's not a lack of appreciation for education and staying current. Again, I have to recertify every single year, multiple, in multiple ways, in multiple products. So I don't think we're saying that's, you know, out of value.
Sure, um, thank you. And I understand that, in the private sector, that you have to keep up your certifications. I have to do that as well.
Absolutely.
For my employment. But if you look at the details of these sabbaticals, they're coming back with real proposals to impact the classroom. And, uh, once again, that's what we're doing here at NIC. Everything we do is on behalf of the student. And so I don't want to see us look at any way of eliminating professional development with a huge impact on students. If we had to, I would once again bring up that capital investment reserve fund and say, we can afford this. We support...
I'll let you talk to Ron about that.
Absolutely support, um, excellence in our classrooms, and that's what these three sabbatical proposals are about.
Any other comments? Judy?
Justin Doris, the same thing. The sabbaticals provide a recharge time, which brings new energy back to the classroom, and that's what the education is about, the scale of what we're doing in the, in the big picture. Um, I would choose to cut something else, but not, not 36,000 for sabbaticals, but it wouldn't be the reserve fund.
Any other comments? Um, I, um, when I look at this request, I, I, first of all, Todd, your comment about the, the cart before the horse, yes, it probably would have been helpful for us to have this first, but we can go back in and amend the budget and take $36,000 out of it, you know, if we were to defeat this motion. So I don't think there's a problem. But quite frankly, if we were to look at a $60 million budget, we could all go through there and find issues of 36,000 here and there that we would have issue with. Quite frankly, I think, to a large degree, we have to have faith in the administration's choices as they go through this budgetary process about what is important to the institution and the value they put on it. And, um, if, if this was a multimillion dollar, um, issue, I think it would be more important. But I, quite frankly, think that when, when the administration has gone through all of the budget-cutting efforts that they have, and they still feel that this is an important ingredient for this college, I think that we, at least I, um, take that with a great deal of, of respect.
You know what, Mr. Chair? I, I appreciate that to a point, but they also still wanted the $300,000 for the step increase. They also wanted the other one, I mean, it's a big wish list, and yeah, it's great, and they're advocating for their employees, and I can appreciate that, same as I did. And so, and we actually had to cut it down, and then Sarah came back with what we finally agreed to after adding the 1% for the part-time. So I think the reality is if we had unlimited money, we'd keep asking for things, and I'm, so I don't know where the priority stops until we direct it to stop, so, you know.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, on, on behalf of the employees of, uh, North Idaho College, and with all due respect to Mr. Banducci, this is not just a wish list. There are things that are important to employees and to the well-being of the institution. And when you look at, uh, wanting to take care of employees, it's important that our salaries are competitive, and it's important that we keep pace with the cost of living. With regard to, uh, professional development, um, in any organization, that is how you affect change. You can have a stagnant organization and not do any professional development, and nothing's going to change. And so professional development provides an opportunity for faculty and staff to learn new techniques, to learn new processes, to learn new skills, and bring those back to this institution and affect change. And so the notion that professional development is a frivolous, um, activity is nonsense. And so if there's that sense, then I would suggest that be dispelled. It is critical to an educational institution that we have professional development at all levels.
Did I hear anybody say frivolous, or even arbitrary, or capricious? I, I don't think that was stated. In fact, I think the importance was emphasized, that it, it's a reality, however, how we get there, and that there is a number of items desired.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the three sabbaticals that have been proposed by the administration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two opposed, three in favor. The sabbaticals are approved.
Thank you.
Next, uh, item on the, uh...
Make sure that, uh, I think that Joe, uh...
Speech.
No, no, yeah, I think that there, there, let's, let's, let's do some clarification here, because we don't want to divide this board up into saying that the word frivolous, I don't think I ever used at all. I have lots of employees that go into continued education. I pay for that education, and I support that education. There's just times where if my company or any other institution in the world is having some tough times, you go and you look at what you can do to cut back some of your expenses to balance a budget. And that this is, it isn't one of the target items, it's just one of those things that you would consider postponing in a down year and bring it back in a good year. So I think that you read too much into the, the reason that we think that, that this is probably tough times call for tough measures, and this is a tough measure.
And then we did take tough measures in reducing the budget by 2.3 million.
Please, go ahead.
Well, and, and Mr. Chair, I'm going to add to that, because there were, it was quite an assumption made there, I believe, and I look at it as mission accomplishment, and whether it's in private sector or even when I was in the service, there were times when do, we could send guys off to training, enlisted guys, junior NCOs, airmen, junior officers, you know, whether it was squadron officer school or to a tech training class, and there were times to accomplish the mission. We couldn't do that, and guys had to understand when we could and when we couldn't, and when we had budget issues and we couldn't afford the TDY travel or whatever. So again, it's, it's not to say that it's not important, it's just the timing and the prioritization.
Okay. And we, we approved that, so let's move on to the next tab item on the new business, the Student Rec Center. And Benaya and Josh, I thought you two graduated. What are you doing?
Chairman Howard, we did. So I guess I'm the former ASNC president, and Joshua is the former ASNC vice president, and I guess we're now former NIC students officially, too.
Alums.
So good evening to you all, Chairman Howard, the board members, Dr. Dunlap, Mr. Lyons, constituents, and guests. It's definitely a privilege to be here again. You haven't gotten rid of us yet, so, um, obviously, we're here tonight to talk to you about the Student Recreation Center project, and it is our hope, and I say that confidently, um, I hope, I pray, that that's a confident definition of hope, that we can provide to you, uh, the desire of the students, of the student body here at NIC in the Student Recreation Center project, and that we can clearly communicate the implications and intentions of this project and go over the next steps with you all. So since April of last year, ASNC has conducted some very important work on the Student Recreation Center project, and we're going to go over that. And here on the next slide, um, we're going to talk about, over the course of this presentation, the, um, current student survey that we put out in February and in March. We had two surveys, and I'm going to explain that later, but the, the first survey that we put out at the end of February had 1,200 students participate, and that's a little over 20% of NIC's student body population for this last school year. This project has been at the forefront of students' minds since 2002, when it began. Over the years, a lot of great work has been done to explore the need for the Recreation Center facility, and the need as we know it now is very prominent, and many students think that the need is great. This survey was conducted in February, as I mentioned, and support was outstanding. It has also remained consistent with student support over the last decade. So one of the first questions we asked on the initial survey in February was, uh, the opinion of the students for realizing the need for a rec center, and 78% of students said yes. Another question was, we actually asked them if they support the building of this recreation center, and 64% said that they strongly agree, and 25% said that they agree. So that would be a total of 89% in favor of building a recreation center. Here, we're going to travel back in time a little bit to 2003 survey results, and we, the question that was asked by ASNC when they conducted this survey over a decade ago was how strongly would students favor such a facility? And here, it's 67.7% in favor, and 18.7 in moderate favor, and that's a total of 85.4% in favor. Now, we're going back to the 2014 survey, and this looks at current facilities. And we asked students if they felt that the current student, the current facilities were adequate, and 79% said no. And if you were to go over to our current facilities, Christian Sim Gymnasium, which I feel the overall consensus is that it is outdated, the Witten Hall, uh, facility where our weight room is, and other physical education classrooms, um, many students feel that the current facilities are inadequate. Now, we're just going to take a brief look at amenities that we, uh, we tried to get a gauge on for which amenities were the most important to students in looking at a new facility. And here, they're ranked in order of importance, one through seven, as you can see, were the most important to students, and then eight and nine were at the bottom of the list. Students did have an opportunity to write in, uh, an idea for, uh, an amenity if they so chose. So there's a very brief overview of those. Now, this slide is going to be very important to kind of focus in on. It has the initial survey with the pie chart, and the question that we asked was, to what extent financially would they be willing to support the rec center? And initially, students did choose the lower amount. 56% of them said $40 to $79 per semester would be what they're willing to pay. However, this amount would not allow for the amenities that they said were very important to them. Now, in question six on this survey, we also asked students if they have a membership to a gym, and if they do, how much they pay. Now, 487 students, according to our survey, do have a gym membership, and at an average of $26 per month, which is a total of $312 per year. And then for nine months, uh, what they communicated to us was that they're paying $234 for the nine-month membership of the year. And this information prompted us to do a follow-up survey. I mentioned that we did do two surveys, and that question on the bottom there is what we asked in the follow-up survey. And we felt this, this was the most important question moving forward, as it provides the students' opinion, uh, on whether or not we're willing to support a $100 fee, uh, which would be what is needed at this point. And approximately 400 students participated in the follow-up survey, not as much as the initial survey, but for NIC surveys that the college puts out to students, this is a very, very good survey turnout, even having just the 400.
What was the, what was the percentage of this survey? The response was what?
For which survey? Are you asking the previous slide?
Percentage of students you said were less this time around that responded?
Yes, so 1,200 were in the initial survey at the end of February, and two weeks later, at the beginning of March, mid-March, 400 students.
400?
Yes. We're going to look at the project's scope. This is very general, very brief, and subject to change as you direct the administration to work on this project or not. And you can see there the square footage, the gymnasium, which is, which projected is actually two main... This is very general, very brief, and subject to change as you direct the administration to work on this project or not. And you can see there the square footage, the gymnasium, which is...which projected is actually two main gymnasiums, and then the elevated track, and then the rest there.
Are these in priority?
Yes. This would be the ideal facility. All of those included would meet the needs of the students. Now, here, we're just going to take a look real quick at a few important areas of campus and subjects of the campus that would be impacted by a Student Recreation Center facility. And the first is how it would affect recruitment and retention. We have some statistics provided by NERSA, which is a professional organization for recreation professionals on college campuses, and this is a peer-reviewed research project that was published just last month, and you can see the statistics there. Now, in my opinion, this is a very important number because these are really the first number...first statistics on rec center provided by any organization that actually showed...that tangibly show the impact of a rec center on a higher educational campus. So, I'm very happy that NERSA was able to provide these statistics in a study. And then, we're looking at how it affects health and wellness also, and we have, from the NIC Student Wellness Pilot Project that was conducted in 2013 by nurse practitioner Pat DeSmett in our Health Services, we have a statement here. And if you'd like, I can later go into details on what that pilot project failed, but we're going to keep going at this point. We also have a statement provided by Tim Gerlitz, our Director for Center of Educational Access, which is our Disability Support Services. You should have in your board packet one letter addressed to the associated students from Mr. Tim Gerlitz, and you should also have a letter from the Physical Education Department and Resort Recreation Management Department by Paul Menzardo that was addressed to the students. Both are letters of support that will help explain this information in further detail. Now, the bottom one here is from Paul Menzardo with PE, and these...this is information pulled from those letters. We're going to move on and talk about next steps, and really, this is what I feel the most important part, the next couple of slides. As we overview the next steps of the project, really, all we're asking for tonight is approval to move this project forward into the next steps. And while those next steps might only be the first few points there, we wanted to lay it all out for you, because this is what is at the forefront of students' minds, and this is what we've been thinking as we've been working diligently on this project. So, as you're all aware, the Dormitory Housing Commission requested that a line item be added to the Student Services Fee budget to conduct the next phase of the rec center project. And this was to include a conceptual design phase, an updated pro forma, and financial information. All of that was implicated when this decision was made by the Dormitory Housing Commission. And so, these are the next steps. Now, what I believe the committee should be comprised of is administration, faculty, staff, and students, and this committee would be conducted by the administration in conjunction with constituents, but we need you guys to help us out in directing this process. So, basically, it's going to shift from a student-led initiative to a board-led initiative, if that makes sense to you. And there are still many opportunities for you, the board, to make decisions as indicated by the points with the diamonds. We're going to look at the timeline next. And this is a timeline that I will say is subject to change as this project develops, but right now is the most important part at the top here, the May 2014, is to approve the next steps of the plan, approve the use of the Dormitory Housing Commission, approve Student Services Fund to commence the design phase. And then, the September, October, and April, May is up to our discretion as we move forward, and we really do feel like this is the best timeline, if you also agree with us. And tonight, we're simply asking for your approval to move forward with creating a work committee that will take this project into a reality. ASNC has demonstrated the students' needs and willingness to pay for over a decade, and I believe we're now at a point where we can seriously look at making this happen. We're not saying yes to the whole project, obviously, but to make this reality, we need to move into the next phase of this project, and I believe that it has been realized. So, I guess I could say we are asking you guys to commit to this project with the anticipation of the provided timeline and passing the fiscal year 2015 budget, 2016 budget, with this fee included, so that construction can begin and the rec center can be realized. So, that is what we ask of you tonight, and we'll stand for questions or comments.
Questions? Judy?
As we listen to you, thank goodness for persistence, and thank you for this orientation. Then, as a board, our role and part of our cost thinking with you is for the site location because that would factor into our use of land. And then, the integration of...otherwise, the cost of the rec center is by the DHC. So, for cost, it's really our site. Then, how do we think about, as a board, the integration of this request with our gymnasium needs and potential remodels, or I don't see how they can be done in isolation, so I just want to think through the ripples of what this leads us to, or ought to lead us to, I guess I would say.
Thank you for that comment and question. I can speak to that, Trustee Meyer, Chairman Howard. The location recommendation is something that I've had discussion with Mr. Grayden Stanley quite a bit on, and we've been seeking direction. Now, that's to be decided by the board, the location, and I believe the best process would be to work with administration, to work with any...anybody hired by the administration on location recommendations. So, anybody that's helping the administration with the master plan, maybe Grayden can help me out and speak to that.
Is there any more questions?
I got a couple, Josh. Right, this is a...at $150 a square foot, this is a $4 million project. Is that about right?
If you estimate it that way, that'd be about right, but...
How would you estimate?
The cost projections are in the air right now with the work needing to be done in the next steps.
But using a good round number of $150 a square foot, which is probably the hard cost, doesn't include the soft cost that goes there, $150 is what's being thrown around in a lot of these building projects. So, if we're talking $4.1 million, just roughly, and you get into this recommendation that we do is we call for a...somebody to go forward and authorize you to do an RFP for the design phase, I'm going to guess that's a hundred and something thousand dollars, roughly. Where is that money going to come from?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd love to be able to address that, Benaya, if you would allow me on that end of it. First of all, the original plans that we brought to you about a year ago, that was talking about two different sites. One was a remodel in addition to the gymnasium, another one was freestanding. As you looked at the estimated costs for both the hard and soft cost of that, they ranged between $7 and $9 million. So, that cost per square foot was higher than what you were estimating. I think our architects that originally worked with us to that end would tell you those were probably on the high side, so if they're going to make a mistake, the costs were going to come in lower than that. Secondly, in terms of where the money's going to come from, what the students are asking for right now is moving forward with a feasibility study that they can present to you that shows all those options. Money has been approved by Dormitory Housing Commission from a Student Services Fund up to $50,000. We're estimating for what you're looking for. It's not a...it's not an RFP for the whole design, but location possibilities, design possibilities, and we're quite certain in both working with the architects and other consultants that we can bring that in for less than $50,000. It's already been approved from a Student Services Fund that's in existence.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just for clarification again, so this $50,000 design fund is currently in the housing fund and will not come out of a budget. And that all you're asking for is to utilize that money to go ahead and do a feasibility on this and do a design, and then, at that point, if you're talking...the number you're talking about, let's just throw a number, it's $5 million, just to throw a number at the wall. Using this $100 fee that you're talking about, this is the increase that you're going to put on the students, a $100 fee per semester? And at a $100 fee, using current interest rates and whatever, what is the...what is the timeline to pay this off, or what would the bond look like for us to be able to finance it?
That we don't know at this point, but that is what we're looking to do in the next step, is to project that so we have a good hold on what we're getting ourselves into.
My suggestion would be is let's just make an assumption it's $5 million, and then let's look at the timeline and what it would take to be able to do that before we authorize an RFP to say we're going to go ahead and spend $50,000, and when we get to it, it's kind of like the sports complex. We started on the sports complex, spent a lot of time, and we found out the parking lot wasn't big enough to house it. So, let's figure out if the funding mechanism that we're considering using will fund this $5 million, we should ask that question, and how would that, like we did what Sarah's done with these bonding people, how would this look? How long would it take? And what is the process? And so, well, this is a doable deal, how we can do this. I think we do that before we...because as soon as you cut an RFP and then you started, you're going to spend that $50,000 like that.
Mr. Nielsen, I think...I think part of the problem with that is there wouldn't be any funding to even pay for the bond council to come back and give us those proposals. I think that that's the situation they're in, that they need approval. Am I right, Grayden? To be able to really come back to us with anything, because there's no money.
Let me interject here. I don't think you need any approval from us. I'm quite frankly, don't think you need to be here today. I mean, I appreciate your presentation, but the Housing Authority gave you authority to spend $50,000 to put a presentation together, and you're coming to us and saying, can we spend the $50,000 to put a presentation together? I think you've already got the answer to that from the Housing Authority who approved the $50,000. And quite frankly, I think our authority is, once you make that presentation to us, to make a recommendation to the Housing Authority so they can decide whether you're going to go forward with it. The statute is really goofy, I think, in this regard, in that it puts us in a position only of making a recommendation to the Housing Authority so that they can give you authority to proceed with, you know, raising...and we would be responsible for raising the fees. That's part of our duty. I think you already have the authority to do what you're asking to do, and that in order for you to come back in September or October with your plan, utilizing the $50,000 that's already been approved, I don't think it's within our scope of responsibility at this time to further approve that.
Mr. Chair? I do have two questions, or one question and a comment. With the $100 fee per semester, correct, what are your projections that that will raise in the next year, two, three? Just curious if you have some numbers to pro forma that you've thought about on that, based on projections for enrollment and that.
You know, that was in the information, Trustee Banducci, that we gave to the board last year. We looked at those scenarios. It was on a 20-year and a 30-year where the levels...and I want to say it was $400,000 per year, but I may be off on that.
I couldn't remember. I know you'd shown us some numbers.
There were some numbers that way. Our intent in this feasibility study would be certainly to come back with all those options and locations and financing, and trying to answer all the questions the board would have to be supportive of the plan.
The only other comment would be, if you're thinking of floating a bond, you know, don't...what are you going to be in competition with? Of course, we should be ahead of you, hopefully, in looking at CTE, but then, what's coming down the pike from the other school districts and everybody else? That's the only other consideration you might want to...
They don't have to float a bond for an election. The Student Housing Authority has the authority to go out and just place the bond.
Right, that's correct. They don't have to do that. Not...I stand corrected. That's right, I forgot about that.
Yes, Judy?
We still need to factor in, and I'm not sure how and when, you know, you can go off and draw and design whatever you want, but somehow, when we talk about integrating it with our facilities here, either with the use of the current gymnasium to do some new stuff, has ripples into what we're going to have to figure out then, or including their rec center with whatever other things we need for physical programs. So, I'm glad to hear the report, but probably, it's helpful to have you here saying, get ready, because we're going to have to figure something out to go along with this.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, I'd like to speak to that. As we've been dreaming about this project and looking at all the implications and who it affects on our campus, that has been something that we've been asking ourselves as well. And this project would affect our outdoor pursuits program, it would affect our recreational sports programs, and affect our physical education programs. And if you read the letter of support from Paul Menzardo, and the recommendation from the Physical Education Review Committee, they have some pretty good reasoning for how it impacts the space that we currently provide and who this center would facilitate and house. If I may, I'd like to speak to a couple of the comments that you also made. We were talking about location recommendation, and that is in the air. It might need to be refreshed, but there is something that you said, Trustee Nielsen, that I wanted to speak to, but I'd like to have my memory refreshed on the comment that you made.
You want me to refresh your comment? At my age, I don't even know what I said, so this is...just, I think that my comment was, is when you look at the cost that it's going to take to build this, and the amount of time that's going to take to pay this off, you have to be able to be assured that the obligation of it's a 20-year bond, that you, this $100 fee imposed by each student mandated, to do that, that you can do this within a timeline, before you go forth and be able to...and order an RFP for a design. I mean, it's a pretty simple...I mean, you don't have to hire a bonding company, somebody can...anybody that has any bond authority at all can work through their smartphone and be able to give you that calculation, is what's the payoff on that at an interest rate of 5% or whatever that number is over the 20-year period? That'll tell you that you'll be able to get it within the time period. That would be just the simplest thing to do prior to spending the $50,000. I think that's what I said.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Nielsen, thank you for that comment, as that is a very good description of the process that needs to take place. And while we're not quite there yet, the work that's been done in the last year and a half, I guess I would just like to simply say that we understand that needs to take place, and that the projections that were done even last year do include the...not only the construction of this facility, but the maintaining of this facility. And as we hope to move into the next step, that is something that we closely look at and get tangible projections on so that we can accomplish this project, if that's the desire of the board. It certainly is the desire of the students, and I hope that we're able to clearly express that and express the work that we've done in realizing who this affects and what's going to need to take place over the next year or so.
Grayden, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Just one second, please. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I was glad to hear Benaya just talk to you about operational costs were included in that when we talked about $100 a semester. That was for operation of the building as well. I wanted to address the question, too, about athletics and the gymnasium and its condition. One of the other entities that Benaya consulted with in this process was not only outdoor pursuits and physical education and student disabilities, but was athletics as well. So, we've had conversations with them. In the feasibility study that would be conducted, I think part of what you'll see come back to you is, okay, taking this gymnasium and remodeling and adding on to it and having separate space, here's one possibility, so it might solve that problem with the gymnasium as well, and here's another option for a freestanding building with potential locations on campus. So, I think you'll see those presented as options to you, and the feasibility study with... And the feasibility study with the recommendation of the committee will probably come back with a recommendation for one or the other, but the options will be available to the board to, to decide.
Are there any more questions? I, I really don't know that anything you're doing requires any approval of the board at this time. I think you have the approval you need, and you have some money that's been provided through the budget of the Student Services specifically for this project. And so I think we look forward to your coming back with a presentation that's put together. And I think the pitch to the Housing Authority was, we need resources in order to be able to go out and get some professional help to put together a comprehensive proposal for the Board of Trustees and for the Housing Commission, and I think you have that authority now. And the other thing I want to say is, I know that students must be feeling frustrated. This is, this, it seems like you keep coming to the well and can't get the bucket down in the water. And don't feel that way. You have done a great job, I think, of going out and surveying the students, you know, helping us understand the sentiment on the campus for the, for this facility, that it's not just one or two years, it's longstanding. And it's a project that you put a lot of effort into, and it shows in what you've done here. And I think you're moving along in a good way to help us understand so that we can help get this project going. And you're going to be handing the project off to Rich and, and the, the new board, I suspect, and I don't want them to feel frustrated with it. Maybe this won't happen, but, you know, everything that we're doing so far indicates that there's a large sentiment for it, and, and a willingness to pay for it out of funds that, you know, don't come out of the, the NIC budget. So we'd like to be able to address that, and once you finish putting your proposal together, I want to compliment all of you for the work that you've done. I think it's really been good.
Thank you, Chairman Howard.
That was Christie's sugar sandwich.
Right, that, yeah. I, just real quick, I, maybe clarification, but this isn't a new thing for the students. In fact, I think the building we're sitting in, wasn't it financed the same way? The Student Union building?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is not new for the college, but thanks for all your hard work, can't wait to see it.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Chairman Howard.
I'm sorry.
I thought they were done.
Yeah. Are you done?
Yes.
Good, thank you very, very much. Yes.
I was going to suggest a five-minute break.
Here, we only have a couple items left, but let's take a five-minute break, and be back here in five minutes.
Five minutes is all you get.
Back in nine o'clock.
After our short break, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is under new business is the first reading for the board meeting schedule for fiscal year 1415. President Dunlap.
Idaho State Code requires that the trustees develop an annual meeting schedule for its regularly scheduled meetings. And in accordance with that state statute, we've proposed in Attachment A, next year's schedule. Now, there are four months where there are conflicts with our normal meeting time, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month. And those relate to state board meetings, the ACCT meeting, and, and I believe that covers the exceptions. And so those months are October, December, January, and February. And I would ask you to take a look at Attachment A. Those are the proposed scheduled meetings for next year, and there is no meeting, as usual, in Jan, July, excuse me.
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we forego the second reading and improve these, this new calendar for the next year.
Second? Seconded, any discussion? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and trustees.
That one done.
Our next item on the agenda is a presentation concerning intrusive advising, and it's an intriguing title. So Graydon, would you explain it to us, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, and other guests. I'd first like to recognize trustee Banducci, who's been asking for this agenda item to, to be put in front of the board and the opportunity to report on it. I'd also like to recognize him for offering to pay for dinner for all the people who are here to present, to stay this long and make that presentation. So that was a generous offer, and I believe they all accept.
Awesome, Todd.
Did you, did you get the money?
The board members, too.
I don't have the money yet, but now it's made public, and so I think it's forthcoming. I should tell you, based on your comment about the title, when I first arrived here a little less than two years ago, we started talking about advising, and the term that I liked to use with the staff was intrusive advising. And I was told by a number of them that that's too harsh a word. And so they encouraged me to rename that intentional advising. So we went to intentional advising for about a month and decided that was too soft, and we went back to intrusive advising. In the middle of all this, trustee Banducci came to us last year, having seen a report, done some reading, and a little investigation on a project in Walla Walla that was described as, as intrusive advising, and the kind of success that they'd had with that program. He came and shared that with members of our staff and myself, and I told him at the time, we had a pilot project working toward that end. And since that time, we have a number of programs that are utilizing the best practice of intrusive advising. It is, in terms of a best practice, if you look at models not only here locally but across the nation, you'll see that probably one of the most effective means of retaining the type of students that we serve in a community college setting are some of those strategies applied as a part of intrusive advising. I have asked a number of people to be here tonight, and Sally Henders, who's our Director of Academic Support Services and Advising, is going to lead this off. You'll recognize some other faces, and they've presented about some of their programs, but in each case, they've been utilizing with great success, and you'll become aware of some of those statistics tonight, the concept of intrusive advising. So I'd like to thank them, look forward to having dinner with all of you, being treated by trustee Banducci. Sally?
Thank you, Graydon. Good evening to one and all. I know we've been here a long time, so we hope we'll catch your attention with a little bit of information about who we are and what we do. This year, our theme has been, keep calm and see your advisor. We have a lot of students on campus who aren't very calm. They come to us, and they're a little bit lost. On the ACT survey, every year, they give students a measure, who take that test, about their level of academic comfort. We don't have very many students who have a high level of academic comfort. Students with levels of, high levels of academic comfort come, and they're the kind of student you would see in a class, and you say, why are you taking this class? Is this for your major? No, I just take classes for the heck of it, it's fun, I like it. Well, at NIC, we have a lot of students with lower academic comfort. They're lost, they're scared, they don't know who to turn to, they don't know where to go, they don't know what questions to ask, they don't have any money, but they're here. And we heard from a lot of those students today. Classes start on Monday, right? We have some students starting the process today. Oh, it's no problem, we'll get it done, because it doesn't start until Monday. They just don't have an understanding of what happens in the college environment. So what we have worked to do in Academic Support Services is to provide an environment for students where we kind of move them into different places, depending on who they are and what their needs are. And all of these individuals represent programs that offer different kinds of intrusive academic advising. We have a lot of support for it on our campus. I don't know if you remember or not, President Dunlap, but the first week you were here, he gave me a call, or Shannon called and said, Sally, come on over, he has to give a speech about the Trio Program. So I got to go over two or three times, and we learned more about that program, and of course he went, and it went very well. About the first, within the first month, that Vice President Graydon Stanley was here, he said, we need to do a study, we need to run a pilot, let's check into this intrusive academic advising. So with that kind of support, and working with all of these individuals, you'll get a pretty good feel that we work as hard as we can to reach as many students as we can, and we really are intrusive. Sometimes they go the other way when they see us coming, because they know why we're coming, and we're coming to talk to them, and that's what our goal is. This is our family, all the different people who work in the different services. We're missing one advisor, and you can see we have a new intern, Olivia Shay. We have a lot of our, a lot of our employees have younger kids, we have grandparents, we have everything in between. So it's, it's a nice place for students to come, and we work as hard as we can to make them comfortable. Here's kind of who comes to us and what kinds of things we do. We have both professional advisors and faculty advisors. Our professional advisors work in Academic Support Services, they help students with academics, they go to the outreach areas. We have one person who goes once a week to Sandpoint, we have a couple of other individuals that go to different centers. We also have our Trio Program, and you've heard from that earlier this year, but you'll hear a little bit more tonight. We also have career advising, and any new people that we bring into our organization are now combined academic career counselors, because we know those two things go together, and we can't have one thing without the other. We also have professional technical represented, and certainly one of our big initiatives is transfer and completion. We also have faculty advisors, and they're kind of toward the bottom of the page, not on purpose, and they help us, and if a student has a major in their area of emphasis, that's then where they are assigned an academic advisor, and also with athletics. Who do we serve? Pretty much everybody. Perspective students, dual freshmen, transfer students, new students, returning students, and current students. So we really have a good mix of people coming in to work with us. Now I'm going to turn you over to the, the experts who work with these people on specific programs, and again, thank you so much for having us this evening.
Good evening. My name's Christina Cox, and I'm going to talk a little bit about one of our earlier pilot programs, and this is when we called it intentional advising, it was a little softer back then. The intentional advising pilot was conducted with students that held a GPA below 2.0 at midterm their first semester at NIC during the spring of 2013. Students were asked to meet with an academic advisor at least three times in order to discuss their academic standings, review challenges, create an education plan, and explore strategies to improve their academic progress. The students were also required to complete an online assessment in order to identify factors that may have led to their current academic status, as well as ways in which they could institute change to improve their academic success. An advising hold was then placed on their account, so they could not register for classes until after meeting with an advisor. This slide here indicates our pilot group. It was based on a random sample of approximately 100 students. The students consisted of first time, full-time at spring semester, as well as transfer, returning, or continuing students with 12 or less completed credits. The students had between a 1.0 and a 1.99 GPA at midterm. The students that were excluded from this pilot included students in developmental courses such as math 015, English 045, college skills course 013, our reading course, as well as professional technical students. Students needed to be registered in six or more credits. The data for this project came from our data and information analysis analyst, and 54 of the 100 students were contacted by Academic Support Services. We contacted them through mail, email, their student email, and by phone regarding their selection for the pilot program. Students were then asked to complete four assessments and bring the results to their meeting with their advisor. An email was also sent to their faculty advisor asking for their input. During a series of meetings with the IAP students, advisors created an academic success plan based on the results of their assessments, an education plan that incorporated the program requirements, as well as brainstormed goals and strategies for future semesters. The advising hold was released upon creation of an education plan allowing students to register for summer and fall courses. So the results of this pilot, approximately 59% were in good academic standing at the end of spring semester. Of the students that were not selected to participate in IAP, 33% were in good academic standing at the end of the semester. While the quantitative data from this pilot does not necessarily indicate whether or not participating in IAP assisted students in achieving good standing, the process did aid Academic Support Services in determining best practices to utilize when working with students. Some of these practices include, early contact with students is crucial, students must be contacted multiple times and in different ways in order to enforce the importance of the advisor/advisee connection, increasing the awareness surrounding academic standings is not only necessary among students, but also among NIC staff and faculty. Finally, early introduction of time management strategies, study tips, tutoring resources, and college skills courses is essential to student success. Like all advisors, our next presenter, Carrie Hines, currently utilizes the aforementioned best practices, but has also developed a more in-depth intrusive advising approach with students that she'll talk about next.
I don't really want to read this testimonial, because it has my name in it, so I feel like I'm talking about myself in the, in the third person. But I will tell you a little bit about this student. Tiffany has been one of my advisees for two years. I met her through the Academic Admissions and Academic Standards Committee. She came through that committee, she had been suspended and was asking to come back. Part of the conditions of her coming back was that she met with me on a regular basis, and she has now, after two years, completed all of her prereqs for the Physical Therapy Assistant Program. She needed a little bit of time off from school, so she's doing a little exploring down in Colorado. She'll be coming back next January, hopefully, to start that program and complete. So she is definitely one of our success stories, and she's a sweetheart, so just wanted to give her a little shout-out here, because she just did such an amazing job. So one of the, or some of the populations of students that I work with are students who are on academic probation, suspension, or they have been disqualified and have been allowed to come back to school. This kind of started, I've been a member of the Admissions and Academic Standings Board for several years, and I started thinking, wouldn't it have been nice if somebody had caught these students before they had to come before this committee, before they had reached this point? So after working with the IAP students, with the program that Christina just talked about, we took some of those best practices and we implemented them with students who had been placed on academic probation. So these students are more in a warning semester, it's before they've actually been suspended from school. One of the, again, one of the benefits is, is that you catch them and you make them aware of the fact, that was something that we realized when you would ask them when they came before the standards committee. Did you even know that you were on probation? And oftentimes, they would say no, they just didn't have a clue that those bad grades actually could lead to something like suspension, or eventually disqualification. So in wanting to keep them from being dismissed, we started doing an intrusive advising program with these students. The things that we do with these students, they are contacted by an advisor. That's one of the keys to an intrusive advising program, it's advisor-initiated. Oftentimes, these students, if they're at risk, or especially if they're on probation, they might be feeling a little embarrassed, they're not necessarily going to come to you for help. So again, as Christina was talking about, contacting them in several different ways. Could be a letter, snail mail, some of them still like that, an email, a phone call. And if they're not responding, oftentimes I'll go out to the faculty to see if they are in class, and if so, is there a way that we can somehow work together to get the student in for an appointment? Once a student comes in for their initial appointment, they do a student success assessment, it's a self-assessment, kind of gives them and me an idea of where they're at. Oftentimes, a student's perception of how they're doing in school is very different from how they are doing in schools, so that's important for them to kind of do that self-assessment. Based off of that, and we also do a study skills inventory. A lot of times, our students come in and they're not quite ready for the rigors of those, those reading intensive classes, or those writing intensive classes, but they don't know how to get those skills. A lot of times, by the A lot of times by the time I see them, it's too late to get them into the college study skills class. So this is a way to start implementing and teaching them those skills and where they can use it while they're in their classes. Based off of how they do on their self-assessment and their inventory, we then develop what we call an advising syllabus. So we ask these students to come in and meet with us on a fairly regular basis. Usually about every other week they will come in. But there needs to be a purpose to those meetings. It's important for them to make that connection and come in and check in. Tiffany, again, who's been my advisee for two years, this last semester she often just came in just to say hi, tell me how her A and P was going, and then she was off. When they're first coming in though, it's important for them to understand why they're coming in to meet with you. So based off of how they do on their assessment, you start to prioritize what they need to do. So we work with them on career development, we start doing academic planning. Again, working on those study skills, time management, just making sure that they understand what it means to be a student, also where to go when they need help. And like I was saying, regular contacts, it's about every other week. That seems to be the best timeframe to have them in meeting with you. Some of them really like you, want to come in more often, which is always nice. But also there's some monitoring that goes on with these students, four-week progress reports. If you let them get to midterms, sometimes it's a little too late to, to recover the grade. So four-week midterms, let's make sure they're attending, let's make sure they're engaged in class, let's make sure they're doing their homework. And then of course, the, the midterms are usually a pretty big key of how those students are doing. Based off of these best practices, the results that we have, we have come through, the spring of 2013, out of the participating students, because this was voluntary, we, we did contact these students, and it was really up to the student to, to then come in and engage with us. Out of the participating students, we had a 46% who were eligible to register the next semester versus the non-participating students that were at 21%. This last fall semester, we did do some tweaking, we got a little bit more kind of in there. That's when we implemented the four-week progress reports. Out of the participating students, we had an 86% success rate. So 86% of those students were eligible for registration this spring. And again, we had that 21% for the students who were non-participating. This year's numbers are still out, still waiting for some grades to come in and kind of see how that shapes up. But so far they're looking, they're looking pretty good, the ones that were coming in and were meeting. A lot of these best practices, I will say, I stole from another program that's been on campus for a while, which Holly Edwards is going to come and talk to you guys about.
Good evening. My name's Holly, I'm from Trio, and... Well, there's some student pictures, you can see. Trio is a federal Department of Education grant that actually originated in the late 60s out of the Johnson administration as part of the War on Poverty. The Trio SSS program has been here at NIC for 14 years now, so we have a very long history here at NIC. The goals of the Trio program are to help students stay in school, so persistence, retention, graduate with an associate's degree and transfer on for a bachelor's degree. All of our students must qualify for Trio as well. So students must be all pursuing a bachelor's degree and at least one of the following, first generation, low income, or a student with a disability. So our students are quite at risk. Our, our regulations go a step further and say, they must have additional risk factors in order to qualify for your program. Some of, and there's a number of those, some of those are GED recipient. We have some homeless students in our program, single parents, low GPA, those types of things. Since its beginning at NIC, the Trio program has had intrusive advising at its core. That's really what we do, and what it comes down to is we come in and provide a support system for students. We have very small caseloads, which really helps out. As I mentioned, our students are highly at risk, they have a lot of issues they're working through. And so they require a lot of one-on-one time. They, oftentimes a student in their first semester might meet with an advisor every other, every other week, and they might see their peer tutor twice a week. So it's not uncommon that a student will have 20 to 30 contacts with our office in their first semester. And that's really what they need in order to be successful. A large part of our intrusive model is constant monitoring. One example that you heard Carrie talk about is the four-week progress reports, and that's one of my favorites, because it really gives us an early snapshot of how they're doing. We send out progress reports to every one of the faculty that's teaching a class for all of our students. And we solicit information such as attendance, suggestions for improvement, how they're progressing in the class. And that really gives us a good look at how they're doing. It also holds the students accountable, because they know that we're sending out this information, and we're going to be calling them in and saying, let's talk about this. It allows us an opportunity to suggest some skill building, some tutoring, whatever it may be that students need. And the other thing that I really like about the four-week progress reports is it's a great example of a campus-wide effort, and I think that's why it's so effective, because it requires the work of advisors, faculty, and also other offices on campus to really get the job done. And that, those are the efforts that are most effective when we all team up and partner. We really take a holistic approach with students. We have, students are not just students, they're not students in a box. They have all kinds of other factors that impact their school. And so we have to address those, many times those are referrals, because they are issues that, that aren't within our scope, but they still need to be addressed and worked through. So we, we do provide a very holistic model, a support system, and that helps students to learn to become more independent and more self-sufficient and empowered and educated about pursuing their own education. One example from this year, I had a new student start with me in the fall, and we do some pretty extensive goal setting with our students that come. We use assessments where we assess their academic confidence, their strengths, their weaknesses, areas that they have concern. And through that with, with the one student, we were able to identify some concerns with her confidence level in communicating with instructors. And, which is very typical of a first-generation college student. And so we set some goals, and we, we let her get her feet wet in some different scenarios where she could test out her communication skills. We talked through the potential of taking some communication classes down the road. So in the fall, she worked hard to address that, even though that is peripheral to her, her goals of, of earning her degree. It absolutely affected her ability to be successful here. And I was really proud of her in the spring. She set up on her own and attended her, her own campus visit to U of I Moscow, met with an advisor one-on-one, and came back with an education plan, some advising from that faculty person, set foot on the campus herself. And she's really energized about finishing off her degree and transferring now. So it's that holistic approach that really helps them persist and continue and be successful here, and also build the confidence that you would hope that we do in, as we pursue higher education. And last but not least, our program is grounded in strong academic support. Academics are really at the center of what we do. And probably one of our biggest draws to our program is our tutoring program. We offer one-on-one tutoring, we employ 30 to 40 peer tutors a semester who are handpicked typically recommended by faculty to us. We run a tutor training program that's CRLA certified. So it's, it's a, it's a program with high standards, and our students really, it, it's simply what makes the difference for a lot of them between passing and failing classes, is that one-on-one, very intensive academic support that they receive. And so this holistic approach with a support system and a foundation in academics is, is really what Trio is, is based upon. And it really makes a difference. I, I met you all in January earlier and shared our numbers, and, and I hope those really kind of speak for themselves. But with a retention rate of, of over 80% and graduation of 54%, these intrusive methods really do work. They make a huge difference in the lives of our students. Molly is next.
Hello. Good evening, I guess I should say. My name is Molly Chrysler, and I've stood before you several times. Once as an I Best Girl, and now as a Village Person. I'm under the Continuous Enrollment Initiative. I'm also grant-funded like Holly, however, I'm privately grant-funded under the Albertson's Foundation. We have been intrusive advisors since our inception. We have fully embraced that word and taken it as many times we could enrolled with it. So I wanted to tell you.
Thank you. That's Holly.
A little bit about our, so we have been renamed as the Village Project. And I wanted to let you know a little bit about what our definition of intrusive advising is. That all of the schools enrolled in the Continuous Enrollment Initiative all have the same best practices. The Continuous Enrollment Initiative has a definition for intrusive advising, and then each school can tailor it to meet the culture of their, of their student need. Our definition under, that we learned through IBS and will be applying through the Village Project, is that we support students while managing college systems daily, challenges in their personal life while they are attending school. We look at engagement as our responsibility, an institutional responsibility we take for the student as they register with us. And we don't wait for the student to realize they're in trouble to reach out, but we understand our responsibility to be the experts who can access and get them to the resources that they need in order to persist. We are in the habit of speaking student, and so I thought I would tell you the story of a student so you understand the flavor of how we intrusively advise. On the screen you will see, that is my friend Sam. Sam is a welder, but he was not always one. We found Sam on the corner of Fifth and Lakeside smoking a cigarette. And Judith and I do, and you've heard this, where we follow students on the streets and get them to, to school. And that, that's where the intrusion began with him. He was smoking a cigarette, and two random women walked up to him and started talking. It's kind of the way I met Grayden actually, less the cigarette, and it was at Java. But yeah, nobody was smoking, but it was a very similar interaction that we, we approached Sam about, have you ever thought about, you know, finishing your GED and going to college? And he didn't want anything to do with us, and he wouldn't look us in the eye. But we knew where he hung out, and so we kept coming back and intruding into his life and his social scene until he finally said, Uncle, I'll come and talk to you ladies and, and see what we need to do. So he did get into his classes through the GED Center and progressed. But then when it came time to test, he got cold feet, which is very common. So we again knew his corner and went back to the corner until Judith finally got him to, to sign up for his GED tests. Then we got him to his GED tests and sat outside until he was done. It's very common for Judith and I to sit on benches around campus or knock on classroom doors and look our students in the eye and say, come on out, you need to talk to me right now. Because we, we intrude in that kind of a manner. The faculty and staff are very ever patient with us, that they know that if we show up at a door, something's going on with that student that needs to be taken care of in for, in order for the academics to progress and, and take place. Sam did enroll in the welding program and started progressing through his classes. But as always, it, you know, they start hitting, hitting their, their stumbling blocks as they start going. So they will have an academic confidence issue like Holly talked about. We also get to know the families and the support people around our students if they haven't, because I know if they have a girlfriend, the girlfriend will tell on them. And so if the girlfriend has my number, she will call and say, Sam's in trouble, he's not doing his homework. And then I say, I heard from a birdie. They haven't figured out who calls me, if it's their mom or their girlfriend, and I don't care, as long as I get the information. I'm open to receiving in any way that it comes to us. And he also got dropped from financial aid at one point by no fault of a policy or procedure of the, of the college, but a student just not understanding the process and dropping the ball at one point in time. And so he would come to us in a panic, and we would make sure we got him to financial aid, and he was able to follow through the steps. He also was in a hunting accident and had an injury where he got a cast on his foot and kind of walked away from his English class. But one of the other welders told on him and said, you know, Sam is actually going to fail out of his English one-on-one class. And we were able to get in there with him, get him to the faculty member, talk about an incomplete option so that he could turn in the paper. Well, this particular welder, a computer is not his friend at all. And so when it came time to turn in, he had the deadline that day. He'd written the whole paper, but he'd saved it under a format that wasn't compatible with one of the computers in the welding lab. So he called me in a panic, and so I had to get in my car and go to the welding lab. If you've ever written an English one-on-one paper in a welding lab, it is a very different experience. The paper that he turned in to Dr. Frye had a welder boot stamp on it, and it was on the back of a welding blueprint. But he got it in. And he got a B. Right? So those are the kinds of intrusions that we kind of do with our students as, as we follow through. Like the other ladies have said, typically they can't advocate for themselves at first. It normally takes me a year to get them to the point where they understand they're in trouble and then can advocate and come to me instead. So even after that year, they never fully go away, but they can kind of tell me, raise the white flag and say, this is what I think I need, I just don't need to do. Or I need to know what to do at that point. And so they kind of cycle through for as long as they're here. Sam, I just pulled his grades today, 3.5 cumulative GPA welding and academic classes. He'll be coming back to finish his associates in the fall. Yeah, he did really good, we're very proud of him. We, we do assess our students on intrusive advising. That was our, some of our crop from this year. That was the day we wrapped filming from the movie that we showed you earlier. We do assess students on intrusive advising. Not necessarily in those words, because they don't know the theory words or the academic words that we use, the vernacular is a little bit lost there. We do ask them programmatically what they value, what they find helpful, and what they like the most, as well as what is your perception of our roles? And when we, when we drilled down a little bit further in our, our research specifically for, for this cause, when we asked them those questions about, what did you like, what was most helpful, what was most valued? 100% of the time, they indicated intrusive advising. So as much as we really do get personal, and sometimes intrude where, like Sally said, they run the other way. We've had students that like lower their hats when we show up at the classroom. We have informed them that does not make them invisible and does not work. So it's a learning curve. That as much as they may avoid us a little bit, 100% over three years indicated that is their favorite thing about our program, is that we really get in there with them. Our retention and persistence are numbers that we have reported to you before. And we do believe that this is one of the biggest things that we, that we do to make them successful. When we ask them how they understand our rules, they never use the words intrusive advisor. I've heard pitbull, I've heard Judith call the bear before. And every once in a while we get angel, but most likely it's the, the former. I believe that we're open to questions, any of us, if you would have any, and thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
I do have a question. With the tutors that you're hiring, is that through the work-study program that you do that? Or is that a separate pot of money?
Our, our tutors are fully funded through the grant.
Oh, okay.
So there, we use grant funds, and, and it's, it's a big chunk, but it's, it's our bread and butter. It's what our students need, and so we're, we happily pay our tutors out of our grant funds.
Christine?
Well, this is just incredible, really incredible. I, I think I'm the only board member that has ever been a student at NIC. You can't count any of your, you know, stuff basket-waving. Yeah. But I will say, not very proudly, I wasn't a great student in the 80s. And so when I came back to work toward my bachelor's degree, I had to really work hard. But the way that this has changed since the 80s, so I, not being the most committed student, walking in front of Lee Hall and my instructor was behind me, one of my instructors, and he literally kicked me in the butt physically and said, we know you have the abilities, you need to get your head in the game. And that was effective, but compared to what you offer, I mean, I would have sailed right through. I would have been that student that would have loved to have had that level of support. So I am just amazed at what you do and in awe, and so grateful that we have these opportunities with grants and, and with our own programs.
Judy, you got a question?
Just a question, back in the first or second slide, I think it talked about you did not serve professional technical people? And I think...
It depends on the program.
Why wouldn't we?
Different programs are, are a little bit different. The Trio grant that Holly talked about, that grant was written, and, and the only way we can do well on our evaluations is if they get an associate's degree, transfer to an institution to get a bachelor's degree. But many of the other programs, I think you probably want to speak a little bit to more of the professional and, and technical, and it isn't always, that's, that's what we're working on this semester, and it's a fun challenge. How do we get the students to the right place? And it's, it's not competitive, it's not like, I've got this student. You know, they kind of might bounce around and do some different things. And some of them are in professional technical programs, but they're going for an associate's degree. So we just, the challenge is getting them in the right spot. And, and we're working on that, and it's, it's working pretty well. The nice thing is, we all get along well and collaborate pretty well, so it doesn't feel like it's competitive in terms... like it's competitive in terms of finding students.
Making it happen. Thank you.
Question, as you have your team, and one of the names escapes me, but she was recognized as the Counselor of the Year a year ago, and then I know Kelly Nolan. How does, for example, how do a couple of the different people plug in in here? Now Kelly's, I think, doing more on the PTE side, so who would she be working with?
Kelly's an expert on the PTE side, and she is officed in Academic Support Services.
Right.
So she just gets up and walks to a different office. Or if we have a student in our office that really has questions we don't know as much about, we're not going to make it up. We'll walk up and go over and get them hooked up with Kelly, or call Jennifer, and we can schedule for Kelly as well, so.
And like I said, I know you had another advisor, and I can't think of her name now. She was recognized a year ago. Gail.
Ella Ferrier?
Yeah. Now, where would she fit into this group?
It's all over the place. She is our Assistant Director for Career Services, so her passion is career services. And she works with two of our advisors who are kind of combination academic and career advisors. And so they work with Gail in that piece, and they work with Christina in the advising piece, but then they all come together as well.
Sounds like you all are kind of--
Yeah.
--intertangled. I don't know if that's a good word or not, but--
We're working on a smoother way to say that, but we're not quite there yet.
You said something that I think that is a problem that we need to deal with, is that I think some of these students that you see here have had a whole life of failures. If you talk about failure in their home, they've seen divorces and alcoholism and drug abuse, then they can't make it through high school, so now they failed. And then you get them in a GED program, and then you go pick them up off the street, and now somebody's giving them attention, somebody's loving on them, but if he's not willing to sign up on an academic highway, that the funding doesn't follow that person. He needs it more than anybody, so you would surely think that we would say that we want to give these students that are on a career and technical highway the same love and care that you're giving to them, because that's the person that, once he gets his head above and once he gets on that highway, he's the one that will go on to get the continued education. But it's almost like our education system penalizes those people that can't see the vision, because they don't say, I'm going on an academic highway. So I think we need to work on making sure that we count this as success if somebody goes on, gets some English class, gets their GED, gets their career and technical degree, and gets some additional schooling, because he's the one that's going to go off, get a job, because his girlfriend and the child together, he has to start making money. And then once he figures out that he can make more money by applying a skill, get this stuff, comes back to school, we won't get him unless we keep him in the system. So I don't know if we can do that.
But one thing that we are doing, and we're just kind of beginning on this path, we're working much more closely with ABEGED, and they have been at some of our meetings, and we've gone over to meet with them. Gail, the person that you talked about, she goes over and does class presentations in PTE about different career-related topics and information, and invites students to come in and take assessments and inventories and such if they're not sure what they want to do. So we've started to make some pathways, and really, what has driven some of that, we're kind of decreasing the amount of remedial education that we're doing, developmental education that we're doing with some of our students, so we're referring them to ABEGED for a class or two. And I think that's really going to strengthen our relationships in helping, finding those students who need help and finding the best places to get them help. But we have a long way to go.
Todd?
One comment and then just a question. First, you guys are doing a great job, and Grayden, you know, I support this 1,000% if we're allowed to say it that way. We'll go over 100, 110, whatever. So great job, great job. One of the things that you mentioned, though, was the integration of the faculty and the different offices and the different parts of the campus, I guess, if you will, in support of this program. Sounds like you've gotten the teachers to buy into this pretty well, whether it's knocking on the door and bringing the kid out of class at that time, or just giving you the progress reports, you know, the four-week report. So I compliment you on that, because that's quite a challenge, because that's an additional bit of work for them, too. So it sounds like that's working pretty well. Am I hearing that right?
It is, and you know, we've, the Trio Program, Holly's program, have worked, and everything is electronic now, and it goes out and it comes back, and it's a much easier process. But some of our closest, probably two or three of our closest faculty friends, they don't want it that way. So every semester, we deliver and print it out once to certain faculty, because we know they'll help the students and they'll get the students to us. And so it's relationships. You know, that's, we try to treat the students the way that we would want to be treated, but I would say, and loco parentis kind of went out of the way on that, because we, I mean, we really push them. We tell them what we think. We tell them how it is, and sometimes they don't like that, but they usually come back.
Any other comments or questions? I have a question. It sounds like the program is called an intrusive program because you actually are aggressive in going out and getting the students involved in the program and then staying with them. And I guess my question is, how long do you stay with them? Do they graduate out of the program by achieving certain things? Do they, is there a timeframe in which they're gone? I mean, how do you determine when they don't need the help anymore?
It's kind of different with different programs. The grant programs have reporting that is done either to the private foundation or to the federal government. So once a student is in those programs, we hang with them for a long time. Match of what goes on in our advising services, if they stay on probation too long, they're not going to last. So they kind of self-select out, if you will. What happens in advising, we take the general students who haven't really decided what they want to do, but once they decide they want to be liking communication, then we might move them over to a faculty member who they've been working with anyway. And so it really depends on the circumstance.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. If there are no more questions, I want to thank you all, and thank you all for the good work that you're doing.
Can I say one more thing selfishly? I have a great job, because I get to work with all of these individuals, Molly, Director, and everybody else working on other leadership roles, and my job's pretty easy, because they're really good. They really care. They're NIC. They think a little bit about being here, and they go after it every day, so.
Must be, it's lasted this long to give the report. It's a testimonial.
Our next agenda item is another information, and it has to do with the demonstration of an alert system that we've recently put in at the college, I guess. Alex?
I didn't leave. And this is Allison Hall from IT. We're just going to give you, this is going to be very quick, but starting this week, we're implementing this all-campus alert program. This was born out of the tabletop exercise that some of you may remember from last July that we did with local law enforcement and EMS services to assess our campus emergency planning and reactiveness. One of the recommendations was how do we reach everybody on campus in a timely manner? At that time, we had what is called Cardinal Contact, and that's a text message that can be sent out from our communication department. One of the issues that came up is that there, when you walk into most classrooms, the instructor tells you to turn off your phone, so that's not going to help you. Other times, we have classrooms that don't get great cell service. Another issue that comes up is, well, what if you're a visitor on campus for play in Schuler Auditorium? So we were able to, through IT and through work with Steve Rupel and through some other, through with security, to find this solution. So without further ado, we're going to show you it and then ask you questions, but just take this computer screen as representative of any computer screen that is turned on on our campus that's connected to our network. So every classroom, every office, every lab, every computer, that's an NIC computer, which how many do we have? I'm going to put you on the spot.
300 plus.
300-plus computers. All classrooms have one in it, so that's representative of that. This is representative of something that's on the wall in a hallway, and watch your ears for a bit, but Allison will unplug it.
Yeah, I won't, I won't, yeah, especially if you're really close by. So what I'm going to do is, I'm actually just going to send out a test message to kind of replicate what would happen. Like I said, it takes a couple seconds for both of these go off, so bear with us here for just a second.
And this connects to our Cardinal Connect, so when we send out an emergency text message, it's also sending it to this system.
And the beacons can actually be set off separate from the computer, so if it's not something that needs to be actually a true emergency, this can be eliminated.
Mark, smile, you got your budget approved. You ready to go? So up on the screen, that's what you would see in every-- So we went ahead and unplugged it, but that would continue on a preset mode. We can preset our messages here for common emergencies, say tornado, or flood, or school closure, or active shooter, or anything like that. We can also customize them, update them. We can divide them by buildings, by campuses. These go to outreach campuses also. The beacons, we were able to, in our pilot program, purchase 16 of those, so we located those in areas that have high usage of public, people that wouldn't have text messages, places that wouldn't have computer screens turned on, and as I said, pilot. It costs us about $800 apiece to expand this. We've identified 44 other locations where that would completely cover our campus and all the outreach centers, just as if we see this as being effective. All the computer screens besides the Macs will be up and downloaded with the software by the end of the week, next week, and we should have the entire campus covered way before fall semester starts. Beacons will be up before then, so we'll be doing testing and drills on that. Questions?
Mr. Chair? Run.
So if, God forbid, if there's an active shooter on campus, instead of you just say emergency alert system, you can put on something is dramatic, active shooter, and the faculty would know at this point, we're going to lock the door, we're going to do whatever, and that would be flashing on the screen?
Absolutely. The yellow box would say, active shooter, shelter in place, lock doors until further notice. We would have preset instructions like that on there.
Judy?
Just thinking about just people with disabilities. So those who can't read this, how will they know?
Well, we have the lights that flash, we have the audio signal, so the flashing, so they would ask that. There is, there are options to upgrade to loudspeaker systems. We went with the pilot program, which was free plus $800 apiece for 16 of them, to get something started, but there are options for that.
I expect that will be an expectation along the way. You need to be able to have anybody and everybody understand the situation.
Hey, Alex, are the additional units plus some of the other things you're looking at, are they in the current budget, or are those part of that extra $60,000 that we're looking to maybe get as part of the security upgrade?
They are not in any current budget so far. We didn't want to put that in, because we haven't piloted it yet to see if it actually works. We feel like the computer screens is a huge, huge, huge step for us in covering the campus, and we hear that back from faculty and staff. If you think every office, every classroom will have this capability, and the beacons can come along with that.
Any other questions? Thank you for that demonstration. Our next agenda item is the Board Chair Report, and I'm going to make this very short, the hour is late, and the day's been long for all of us, but I did want to report on the CTE workshop that the board had yesterday. And it was a workshop for us to ask questions and to also listen to a report from Dave Teeter on analysis that's been done by his group with regard to our, hopefully trying to solve the CTE facilities issues that we've been dealing with for a long period of time was very informative time, and it is our intention as a board to address this at our next board meeting. And actually, we may end up, at the next board meeting, not having constituent reports and the other kinds of things, so we can spend the entire meeting dealing with the CTE and get a resolution to it. As we get closer to that time, and we see how much time we really need, we'll inform everybody, but our hope is that we will make our discussion of the CTE facilities issue almost a single item in the next meeting, depending on circumstances. And that next meeting is going to be June 23rd. It's a Monday, it's not a Wednesday. And I think with that, that ends my report, for the good of the order.
No, would you add to the report? We met with the post-falls city council, and we're going to meet with Rastram.
Rastram, right after our next meeting, actually, within a couple days of our next meeting.
30th, actually, I believe, the following Monday.
Any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none, we are adjourned.